He must have went jogging, he's really sweaty.
Mm hmm. I wonder if Commissioner Dick can hear me? If you can, raise your camera up just to snitch it.
I can hear you.
Okay, great. Can you raise your camera just to snitch it? Push it up.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Excellent. There's your beautiful face.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your patience.
Uh huh. We're about three minutes from start.
Okay.
Just doing a little bit of a time check here.
Okay.
We almost fall by the time our next meeting comes around.
I know. Isn't that crazy? This year has gone really quickly.
Actually, it's summer.
Yeah. And we're just now getting a crazy heatwave. That's and no rain.
I welcome that after.
April showers until July.
Yeah.
Pretty good.
You know?
It was Duquesne this year.
It was. It was a very rainy season.
Hey.
Isn't this El Nino? Or is that, is that? Wait, that kind of. Yeah.
I should have brought him in.
I'm very bad with that, but that's when the winter is not bad, right?
Pretty full.
That's where we'll get a more mild.
Yeah.
El Nino.
Yeah.
Remember, if it's the West that gets the mild weather or.
Okay, let's just hope for like a very decent winter. It's like.
There's some fly without tall, yeah. About fifteen feet tall.
Considerably better.
Yeah, actually, so many of it.
All right, it looks like we're about
Honey's got mine this year.
Two minutes out according to the clock in the room.
Hold on, I take them out. I can get. I probably have a thousand of them. Whenever they get bigger, then I dig them up and give them away. Then you get transplant them. I think there'll be some next year.
All righty. With roughly about one minute out, we might want to go ahead and start to put the recording on. It's so quiet, like a pin could drop in the room. Excellent. And we are almost at time. And it looks like we are at one thirty. So welcome everyone to the Planning Commission meeting for July twenty nine, twenty twenty five. I'm going to start with a sound check for those that are with us online and those commissioners that are in the room. I'm going to do roll call. Commissioner Blackwell. Commissioner Burton Falk, present. Commissioner Dick?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Gammie? Commissioner Maza?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Neill?
Here.
Thank you. And Commissioner Wu?
Present.
All right, thank you so much. So again, good afternoon, everyone. We are at the briefing portion of today. Briefing is when we hear cases before us. There is no public testimony at that time, but commission gets to ask questions and have discussion. Now, there had been three items on the briefing agenda for today. There had been two council bills initially on the agenda, and those are going to be held until after recess due to the bill sponsors. So briefing agenda item A and briefing agenda item B, if that's what you were here for or tuning into, are no longer on today's agenda. Agenda item C, which is the only item on for agenda is as follows. And that is BDA dash twenty twenty five dash zero one two two three at two seventeen Halkett Street. This is construction of new multi-unit residential in the central Oakland neighborhood. And Mr. Kinsella is going to present.
Thank you, Chair Burton Falk. As you mentioned, this is a project development plan application BDA dash twenty twenty five dash zero one two two three that was filed by Dwell Design Studio on behalf of Trinitas Development LLC, the property owners for the construction of a new twelve-story, one hundred and eighteen-foot multi-unit residential building in the central Oakland neighborhood. The building is supposed to contain three hundred and twenty-six units with ground-level amenity spaces and public open space along the building frontage on Halkett Street and planning strips along Iroquois Way and Halkett Place. Per section nine oh four dot oh eight dot D dot two of the zoning code, the planning commission shall review and approve as a project development plan, all new construction of fifteen thousand square foot or more in gross floor area within the urban center mixed-use district. The project site fronts on Halkett Street, Halkett Place, and Luisa Street. The site plan provided by the applicant indicates that the right-of-way on Halkett Place is twenty-five feet wide, classifying that as a street rather than a way per the zoning code. The development site includes twelve parcels that are to be consolidated. The parcels are currently occupied by two- and three-story residential buildings. The law consolidation was applied for and approved on June fourth, twenty twenty five. The project site is located within the steep slope overlay district as the site slopes downward from Halkett Street to Halkett Place. The applicant submitted a geotechnical report for this as a part of the application, and that was approved by the environmental reviewer. Per section nine twenty-two dot fifteen dot C, buildings in the UCMU district are limited to a maximum building length of three hundred feet. The applicant is proposing a separation of the two towers of twenty-two feet, five inches between those two towers, and those building lengths of the two towers are two hundred and twenty feet and two hundred and twenty feet respectively. So this complies with the building length requirement. The applicant is compliant with the build-to-zone requirements as well as the requirements for upper-story stepbacks at sixty-five feet and a second step back at eighty-five feet. The applicant is complying with the the street tree planting requirements of section nine eighteen dot oh two dot C for the frontage along Halkett Street and is currently working with the forestry department to determine potential alternative compliance for the frontages along Halkett Place and Luisa Street. Should that final alternative landscape plan be finalized after the September ninth hearing, that'll be a condition of approval then. There are ten-foot sidewalks that are required in this zoning district, and the applicant is complying with the ten-foot wide sidewalks along each side of the building. The site is located in the inclusionary zoning overlay district, which requires the applicant to provide ten percent of the total units at rents affordable to fifty percent of the area in median income. The applicant is compliant by providing thirty-three affordable units. The maximum height permitted in this district is sixty-five feet with the allowance of up to one hundred and twenty feet with performance points. Each performance point is worth fifteen feet of additional height and which requires the applicant to seek four performance points. The applicant is complying with that by providing by receiving two performance points for the provision of affordable housing, one for stormwater and one for public art. The project includes one hundred and fourteen parking spaces, five of which are proposed to be ADA accessible in compliance with the parking requirements of chapter nine fourteen. There'll be access to the the integral parking garage from Halkett Place. The applicant is also providing a building liner with residential and amenity spaces along the fourth floor to comply with the requirements of nine twenty-two dot fifteen dot A three B. The applicant is also providing twelve EV-ready charging spaces in compliance of nine twenty-two dot fifteen dot three dot A. The applicant is provide is required to provide one hundred and nine bicycle parking spaces and is proposing one hundred and twenty-eight total bicycle parking spaces. There's a requirement for ten percent of the lot area to be dedicated to open space in the UCMU district. The applicant is providing a little over nine thousand six hundred square feet of open space, whereas four thousand and eight hundred square feet roughly is required. This project was reviewed by the contextual design advisory panel or CDAP. The panel was in favor of the breakdown of the building into the two towers and also recommended a more simplified design approach while emphasizing the need to activate at the ground level with building amenities and urban open space. A copy of the CDAP summary is attached to the report submitted to the to the commissioners, and the applicant has made changes since that CDAP meeting to try to address a lot of those comments made. The applicant has submitted a whole building lifecycle report as required by nine twenty-two dot fifteen dot L. The site is located within the boundaries of the Oakland Plan. A plan of compliance letter will be included as a part of the hearing report submitted to commissioners. The applicant held a development activities meeting with the Oakland Business Improvement District and Oakland Planning and Development Corporation on April fourteenth, twenty twenty five. A summary report of that DAM meeting is attached to the report to the commissioners. The applicant is compliant with the off-street loading requirements of nine fourteen dot ten dot A. Finally, under section nine twenty-two dot ten dot E dot two, the planning commission shall review a project development plan in accordance with our criteria of subsection E dot two. Those criteria are included as a part of this report. And with that, I'll turn it over to the applicant team to make their presentation. Good. That's, yeah, I need to go back. I skipped too far ahead.
That's okay. You can leave it there. It's all good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hi, everybody. My name is Matt Clinzey. I'm with Trinitas Development. We're the developer that's proposing this project on Halkett Street, joined today by large teams specifically here for any specific questions you might have, as Adele Beavs with Kelly Horn and Mark Nicole with Dwell Design, the Architective Record. So Paul just saved me about twenty minutes, so I'll delve right into the more specifics, and he's told me to be brief, so I will be. Project site, central Oakland. Sure, everybody knows the area well. Oh, that was backwards. There we go. Okay. McGee is in the foreground. Boulevard is down on the bottom there, and Halkett Street and the twelve houses that are specifically part of our project site are shown in orange as state of two and three-story residential stating from about nineteen hundred, the total site area is about an acre ordered by Luisa, Iroquois, Halkett Place, and Halkett Street. First time I've seen this. This was incredibly helpful provided by the city, an overall envelope of zoning. The site that is specifically our site is on the left there with the UCMU zoning classification. And it was very helpful for us to graphically understand the parameters of the setbacks and where we needed to be. There we go. Okay. And then a section, you see our portion on the left again, the envelope we need to be inside of. Without going into too much detail, on the upper right is how we're compliant. Base concept is we're sticking to the street wall, the property line along Halkett Street to provide a, you know, urban facade, but since there is such a disparity in scale between our building and the existing residential structures along Halkett Place behind, we're taking full advantage of as much setback as we can afford to provide a little more buffer there. This is our overall site plan. The, as Paul mentioned, the site grades about twelve feet, drops about twelve feet in grade from the bottom left corner, which is at Iroquois and Halkett Street, down to Luisa and Halkett Place. That affords us the opportunity to put in two levels of garage at a flat slab that where one gets mostly buried. So it's not seen or impacting the public. We've laid out the site so that we have vehicular access along Halkett Place. So you'll see there are two garage entrances as well as pickups to garbage that would be located along there. That reserves along Halkett Street and the front, really our front door pedestrian access. And so we have in the lower left, there's the bicycle that has direct access to the exterior. The areas in the yellow are amenity areas. They're either lobbies, leasing, study, fitness, coworking. We like to do that as a way to activate the streetscape, as you'll see in the renderings, and give more of an animated facade along the project. Not going to go into too much detail here. As Paul mentioned, we're working with DOMI, have been working with DOMI. On the bottom right is a chart that's a summary of the traffic impact study that we're working through. We're in our second round of comments with DOMI. And so far, the overall statement, I don't know if it's a known term or defined term, is negligible impact. I'll leave that to the others to be more specific. But we are working with cooperation on to move this project forward. This is our overall landscape plan. As Paul mentioned, we're working with forestry and then also with DOMI to navigate between both the requirements for the street trees as well as green open space and sightlines for vehicular access so that we are safe and compliant. All species proposed are native, non-invasive. One of the things we heard in CDAP was a very good comment is we did not adequately illustrate really what we were doing with the landscape, or more specifically, these little parks I'll speak about later that we have here. There's two setbacks, one to the left and one to the right. And so while we will have some area there that's going to have subterranean transformers and working through with Duquesne Light Company, the balance of that actually would be a parklet or a pocket park where we plan on having benches and or somebody can escape the street and just kind of sit there. And so we're looking forward to obviously going into more detail as we move forward. We were asked to put together a construction management plan. I'll ask for a little bit of leeway here since this are early days and obviously it'll take a lot of consideration. When we met, when we had the DAM meeting, you know, one of the biggest comments we heard from all the citizens was traffic, right? And construction traffic specifically. And the duration this project would take to build, two years, that's a long time when you have other projects going on. And so we have taken that into account. What we're currently showing here as a possible canic area but might need updated is there's two red boxes you see in those park areas, and we foresee that we would need two tower cranes to be located here. That breaks down the size of the tower cranes, but given the length of the site, we really need those to cover the full reach. The site would be gated, obviously, along the entire perimeter. We see vehicular access happening on the bottom right and then gated access for smaller vehicles coming in from Halkett Place. One thing we will need to work through with the city is currently there is parking on our side of the project of Halkett Street. And the hope would be that we could bag those meters for the duration of construction, or at least a fair amount of that time, to have a little more area. We also realize that, you know, given the size of the project, we will need lay-down area. And so we're actively talking about other area available to us close by but remote from the site, which would have negligible impact on the traffic that we could use for lay-down area. And then quickly bring it over and assemble with the tower cranes on site. I will also make the point, you'll see in the photos, we have a whole bunch of existing utility infrastructure. There's three triple-phase lines that currently run along poles, along Halkett Street. We have a gas line we need to do work with, and obviously we need to tie into the city sanitary and storm systems. That will require time-to-time shutdowns of roads to be able to actually make those connections. So we'll obviously coordinate. I will say, one of the biggest issues here, too, is we met with UPMC, McGee's Women's Health, and obviously their biggest concern is their primary entrance along Halkett Street. And so we're engaging with them to dialogue, to understand any impacts there may be, and submit those the most we can. It doesn't like me. There we go. One of the performance points that we're pursuing is stormwater capture. And so this is a rough schematic showing how we foresee where the detention tanks would go, where the connection to Pittsburgh H two O infrastructure would be at the corner of Halkett Street and Luisa and the means to get to get down there. And we're currently coordinating with all of the agencies whose acronyms I forget that Adele knows by heart to make sure that we are compliant moving forward. Okay, existing conditions. If you're not familiar with the exact makeup of the site, this is the the overall view. The next slide, when it comes up, has pictures at each corner of the site. There we go. And you'll see, as I mentioned, along Halkett Street, there's a lot of utility lines that will need to be underground as part of this process prior to beginning construction. We do have the old Belgian block cobble that's along Luisa. And you see the row of houses that we have running along Halkett Street. Just some quick detail on the lower level so you understand a little bit how that's made up in more detail. On the top plan is our lowest level or level-one parking. It would be a flat slab. And as I mentioned, you'd access it from the right in the upper right-hand corner coming off of Halkett Place. Then, as you can see, that section line with the grade, as you go forward, really, the majority of that area gets buried beneath grade. And then the plan below, that parking that's remained to make up the hundred and fourteen required for the project would be access from the left side. The balance of those, as I mentioned before, in the yellow are amenities that we are using to animate and obviously serve our residents. Okay. Went a little too far, but that's okay. Top levels, just meant to illustrate the levels do step back as we get high up. Level twelve, which is the bottom plan here, will be our top level. We see a key here is access to an exterior amenity. What's in yellow would be interior, and then we anticipate or foresee operable glazing that would open up so that you could really get to the exterior deck and we would have a place for people to gather with great sightlines of the city and down to the lawn. Materials that's being proposed for the project. It's a combination of masonry and then we're calling acrylic finish, which is a panelized system really made up as traditionally you would know as EFIS. Obviously, there's some metal panel on here. We have metal rails and then low-e glazing as required. The overall concept is is that the more enduring materials that have more detail to them, such as masonry, are located lower, closer to the pedestrians, so that they get that tactile understanding of the building as they get up close to it. Trying to stall as I go forward here. Okay. One of the comments, as Paul had mentioned, that we had from CDAP was the complexity of the overall facade, which is a good one. We took a look at that. And what we realized was happening was that due to more colors than we had with this, it was a breakdown. It just didn't. It didn't consolidate into the pieces and parts that we wanted to highlight. So the overall point here is since we are have a very disparate scale, as you can see from the left, from the neighboring building over to the existing house on the right that would be on Luisa, how do we break down that scale as best possible and make it part of the community? These larger blocks really intend to do that. So we went back and simplified the color palette. We removed a lot of details on the ground floor as well as up on the top amenity area to really make it more focused on what is those those larger blocks that between foreground and background as you look at an elevation, and as we'll see in perspective, tell the tale of the building. Okay. This is good. So here's a more close-up view. The one prior I can't back get back to is the overall perspective standing in front of McGee. As I mentioned here, you see a lobby areas. In essence, it is two buildings since we're limited to the three hundred feet of height, so the buildings are broken completely down the middle. We'll have a pocket entrance there that gets you into either lobby. And you see how the building juts out a little farther down there and begin to see some of those recesses in the front facades. Here's a view further down Halkett Street that begins to show you how it turns the corner. This is really three hundred and sixty-degree architecture. There is no back. We have neighbors on all sides. Here's a view elevated from the back, ghosted are the scale of the buildings along Halkett Place. And again, breaking down the scale with different colors and components to try to make it fit better into the community. This is a view from, you'll see down from the street level at Halkett Place and Luisa. At the bottom, we do have some utilitarian functions where trash will come out. But then you see the windows that would be part of units and amen. But then you see the windows that would be part of units and amenities and the big grade change and the trees, the landscaping that we think is very important to help buffer the building from others. A little more detailed view of the lobby entrances here along Halkett Street tend to be a lot fair amount of glass and storefront so you can really see in. This is now a view within that center section between the two buildings showing what an entry would be like between there. So since they are separated, as you see in the plan, we're trying to provide, make it as convenient as possible for people to walk between buildings, even in inclement weather. And these last couple shots then are a couple of closeups of the parking that we would have along Halkett Place. Okay, there we go. Go back. Go back. Okay, just an overall agenda of what we've done so far. We tried to obviously go through the requirements, but engage the community as much as possible so we understand their concerns and the opportunities and are continuing to do so to bring the project to realization. And that concludes our presentation. Sorry about the transitions.
Oh, no, you did a great job. So thank you. Given that concludes your presentation, at this time, we have no public input, but we do commissioners have questions and discussions as it relates to this application. I'll start off by saying that I appreciate how thoughtful you guys have worked through the pre-planning process. Two years is a long time to be under construction and to really think about the concerns of the neighborhood as you do that construction, making sure you've got lay down pickup where your equipment's going to be is very important. So I definitely will make note of appreciating those thoughtful pieces. Commissioners, additional comments, questions?
I'll go first. I'm Steve Mazza. You know, my concerns always are when a developer comes into town that, you know, the project, how it's going to be built. So and in the construction industry, if people understand that the subcontractors build the buildings, the general contractor only has the two, two schedules, whatever it is, schedule one, schedule nine, whatever it is. So my concern is for safety, public safety, there have been projects in and around the city that that are still ongoing, that aren't, I would say, on the up and up and how they're being built with certain things that have happened on the projects, I won't mention them here. But and also, we always like to see local contractors, local subcontractors that use, utilize our construction people that are in the trades in and from around the area. I mean, that's important to all our pre-apprentice programs and bringing people out of the neighborhoods that actually need light at the end of the tunnel to have a good job and, you know, raise their families up and all that stuff. So that's just my little stump there. But so the parking garage, is that a poured in place parking garage?
It will be. The first two levels are comprised of concrete cast in place and that'll be that lowest level and then the main level, which will have a transfer slab. And then what it's looking like right now from all of our pre, would it would be a light gauge steel building that would go above that.
Structural metal all the way up, dens glass, whatever you're going to put on the outside and.
We're looking at a couple of options. We love the idea of trying to be able to use panelized exterior skin here for quality and quick, you know, fabrication to get it on and up in the building and assembly like Lincoln Logs to limit that amount of traffic, which is not there yet and understanding all those details and protocols.
And it'll be offsite fabrication for those panels if you do get them made.
Correct.
The other thing, the lay down areas is a concern for that area. I mean, for two years and plus you're going to have two tower cranes, I don't know how high, 100 feet high, whatever they are, 125 foot high tower cranes, whatever they're going to be. And just to put those on site, plus to lay down the material getting trucked in, and that's a real tight area.
Yep.
Is there a lot of good options there? I don't know.
So I guess that depends upon your term good and how you define that. There's probably what's most workable and what least impacts everybody. So you're absolutely right. The reality is, is when you put a tower crane up, it takes a couple of days, you know? And so and that's a big operation. So there will be a couple of days during the erection of these tower cranes that we do need to coordinate to make sure that traffic is bypassed and that obviously McGee can still get patients in. The most logical way that we're thinking about it right now is is that trucks coming to offload would be approaching from Boulevard, making their way through Halkett. They would come inside of the barricade in that parking lane. She would be lucky enough to take it down. They would have their pickup picks from there and then they'd continue up towards Forbes and then make their way out of the city. We are looking at other lay down areas we have to, and so that'll be a main thing. I'm building a tower right now in another city. It's 27 stories on 0.6 acres with 10 foot setbacks and the challenges are real.
I understand it now. You mentioned that possibly that you could bag some of the parking meters. So how would that impact the people that use those every day and go to work and also live there in a community?
It, I mean, I, there's no way to say it wouldn't impact them. I guess the question is, is, you know, who today uses them the most part? I unfortunately don't really know that. I don't know if it's residents or if it's visitors to McGee or it's people going to university. But yes, those, those spaces being out of commission, obviously it would be X amount of space is not available during whatever time the city is willing to grant us, should they be willing to grant us that.
Yeah, when you come back, I'd like to see what your plan is for, for those things because that's really important to the community, even though they possibly agreed with the, you know, the project, there's a lot of people still aren't thinking how it's going to impact them every night whenever they come home or, or even the people that are working at McGee or wherever, because we all know at site around there, there's a couple of parking garages here and there sprinkled around.
So I was Pittsburgh born and raised and my dad was at Pitt for, still is, he was 87. So I grew up in the area. I, trust me, I, I know the struggle is real. I get it. So we'll do everything we can.
Why don't you let your dad retire or something, help the guy out?
I'd love for him to.
No, but yeah, I mean, just come back with those things and we'll go from there. I appreciate the answers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good, Commissioner Mazza. Commissioner Dick had her hand up first, so we'll let Commissioner Dick.
Okay, just several questions. Quick, 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 quick questions. What, who are your primary customers? Are they students or working families in the area or what?
So we are, yes, all of the above. And the way I would couch that is, is that we see that probably the majority of the inhabitants will be students. There's a great need. These are meant to be geared to the types of units that students typically like and they will be furnished, you know, which obviously helps with loading and unloading and servicing. However, given the inclusionary requirement and also UPMC's, you know, mass construction and the amount of people, we really see this as a project for everybody at the end of the day. And so we haven't precluded anybody in our thinking and our planning with the amenities and the unit plans.
Well, you say the kinds of units that students like.
Yeah.
What do you mean? Triple occupancy or double?
So we have a, we have a combination of studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms and three bedrooms. Typically, when you're doing a student specific project, you have bed bath parity so that every bedroom has their own bathroom, which we do in a number of the units here. But and that being furnished really are the, you know, specific tickers that speak to students specifically.
Okay. Are all the unit, are all the, are all the entrances ADA accessible?
Yes. So they're, they are required to be and they, they will be.
Okay. And lastly, what's, what percentage of the actual units are ADA accessible?
I wish I had that number for you right now, but obviously we will follow FHA and other guidelines for type A, type B units to make sure that, that we're following those, those requirements.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
All right, Commissioner Dick, if that concludes your questions, Commissioner Wu?
Yeah, I had a few questions. So the homes that currently exist on Halkett Street, are people still living in those homes?
There are, there are active leases there. So it's, it's owned by a few different families, but they're all related in that block as you might expect. And there are active leases currently there.
Are they amenable to this project or if, you know, are, will they also have an opportunity to lease and the new building, you know, maybe as like a priority?
Oh, we haven't had those specific discussions. You know, the reality is, is that, you know, we're looking at taking down the site in the summer, and when I say take down to start construction, in the summer next year and it wouldn't be provided until the summer of '28. So certainly we can be open to those conversations if that's something we want to pursue, but it would mean obviously a two-year gap between where they're living.
As far as the, the homes along Halkett Place, have, have any of those residents expressed concerns about the, you know, shadows or, you know, not getting the sunlight that they used to? And have you done any shadow studies?
The, the answer is apparently yes. And I'm looking at Mark, I just don't remember what they were. So, but we could provide that when we come back as part of the next meeting if that'll check that box.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And just lastly, where, where's your company from?
We're headquartered in Indiana. If you know where Purdue is, that's where the home office is. I live in Indianapolis now, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner O'Neil. Hi. Just a few questions and I wanted to follow up on Commissioner Dick's question. I, I think I just didn't hear you clearly. Did you say all units are accessible or all entrances?
All entrances are accessible. So per the Fair Housing Guidelines, there's additional pieces and things you need to do over and above for certain units. They call out type A, type B that need to be, have accommodations and we certainly will provide those as required. I just don't have those numbers off the top of my head.
Right, so I think if you come back with that information, but I'm sorry, the entrances to the building are all accessible?
Yes.
Because you, if we could go to, I think it's slide eight, there are entrances labeled as accessible in red, but then it's showing some other entrance exits. And I just wanted to understand that a little bit better.
Sorry, do you?
You would need to.
I don't know. I do, I need to, I'm sorry. I didn't, I was still in control. All right.
No goodness. Okay. Hmm, I don't, I don't think that's.
Nope. Sorry, somebody else want to help me out here?
Can somebody pull the presentation back up? Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, so just the next one.
Next one after this?
Yes, please.
I think it was the site plan. That guy? Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
So the key there says entrance exit in blue and then the red are accessible entrance exits.
Correct. So the blues that you're looking at there are not primary entrances, those are egress exits. So those are locations where per code requirement, we need to have access. The one on the right is, you can see it connects into a stair, so it's actually a pathway out. So for all code compliance, we obviously meet what other requirements are, but not as an ADA acceptable entrance. The one on the left, you see the blue dot. Again, that is more of a service. It goes into a back of house where we need to access, but then it is also a means of egress to comply with the building code.
Okay, so.
Does that make sense?
I think so, just to be clear, any residents would probably only be exiting.
So, yeah, if you want pedestrian accessible front doors to get access to the accessible path to the accessible units are 100% covered.
Got it.
Is that?
I think that makes it clear.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you for clearing that up. At the beginning of the presentation, there were some of the comments from CDA and you addressed them in part regarding scale. They also asked for more high quality building materials. How did you respond to that?
We did not change any of the building materials. So there was mention of metal panels. There was mention of other materials and might look like the answer, but the economics of the building is we are doing the best we can specifically with 10% and 50% on the economic impact that has. Unfortunately, the budget will not support a project that we can put more on. We've looked at it. I just can't make it happen.
Right. So obviously, we'd like to see more high quality materials. What we do consider are, you know, materials in context. We didn't, I don't see a lot in your presentation about what's around there. So if your presentation could have more about how materials are contextual, that would be helpful to satisfy that requirement absent that.
Okay. I will reiterate that approaching the building, if you remember, we have glass storefronts, which are obviously a premium. Our masses that you address are all masonry. It's only when you look higher up that you get the less detailed materials.
Right. And just because when I'm looking at what is contextual across the street, we're looking at McGee, which is brick, but it is shorter to your point. And then also that University of Pittsburgh building at the corner of Fifth and Halkett, Forbes, which is masonry as well. So just understanding how that works in context with this building would be helpful in terms of materials.
Got it.
And then finally, I think this may have just been a rendering and I'm going to find out.
Try to go there. Do you want me to go there?
I'm going to find there for.
All right.
Really just a more about the pedestrian experience. Now I'm not finding it. I guess.
I think they all follow this if, is it not?
I guess here is a good question. At the far, at the corner to the right, it doesn't look like glazing or glass.
No.
Okay, and why?
We have back of house spaces as well. As much as I'd love to put all forward facing spaces everywhere, the building just requires servicing components. You know, there's fire pumps, there's generators, there's all the stuff that goes into making the building function, they have to go somewhere. And so while what we've done is preface this to put the majority of those spaces near the pedestrian accessible entrances along Halkett Street to the best we can to activate those facades, you do end up with back of house spaces that are on the periphery on the lower levels of the building.
And understood. I'm not on this panel because I'm not an architect, I'm an attorney. It does look like there is study space internal to the building.
There is, yeah. You can call that study or co-working, whatever your bent would be.
Right. And then finally, just in terms of pedestrian experience along Halkett, it was helpful to see the renderings of the main entrance. You do have the two open spaces with landscaping. If we could see some more detail in terms of a rendering, that would be helpful for me so I could understand. And then also, do you have any details about how those will operate? Will there be picnic tables there or what's the programming?
Yes, we'll provide renderings in more detail when we come back. What I envision, what I, and I think our whole team does is, since it is a, it's a very dense place, Oakland getting more dense, even if we can provide a little bit of break from the street and get back that, whatever that dimension is, I can't remember off the top of my head, so that we would have benches. Don't think we go so far as picking tables. We want something more enduring in an urban landscape that'll obviously stand the test of time.
Right, it just seemed like a large space. I was curious.
Yeah, it's, it, yeah. So yes, we will.
Be programming.
Detail that for you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I don't have any additional questions. Does that conclude Commissioner questions? As I see Commissioner Blackwell and Commissioner Gammy have joined us, are there any additional?
No, I don't have any additional.
Very good. So I will just put a note of reminder, Commissioner Mazza had a few items that he wanted to see back, parking plans as relates to the bagging. If or if not, Commissioner Dick had a question on the percentage of ADA. Commissioner Wu, you heard his request and then Commissioner O'Neil with some detailed landscaping open space for your return. All right, thank you very much. Have a great rest of your day and this will conclude the briefing portion of today. So I guess I'll give us about 10 minutes. Is that fair and reasonable?
Is that fair and reasonable? And then we can be back here at 2:21 to begin the second half of today. Thank you.
All right. You all need to use the restroom or whatever, go for it. Yeah, something to drink, because it'll be a little.
Make sure in that minute that our court reporter is here. And am I seeing a court reporter?
I don't see any.
Mm-mm. No court reporter? If the court reporter is present and waiting, can you raise your hand just so that we can let you in, so we can begin on time? Please, and thank you. Got one, thank you. Excellent, we appreciate you. Because it looks like we're about to get started. Is that Ms. Sherwood, the reporter?
Yes, yeah, I've been here, I've been here the whole time. I just haven't been able to communicate.
Well, we apologize, now you're in, and thank you for being here.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and so commissioners acknowledge that you are here. Thank you so much. It is exactly 2:21. That's when we said we would bring this back to order. So here we are, welcome everyone. This is the Planning Commission for July 29, 2025. We are starting the hearing portion of today. This means that cases will be presented, and they will have public testimony opportunity, and then we will vote. I'm going to do a roll call here, just so that we can ensure that all of our commissioners are with us. Commissioner Blackwell.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Burton Falk, present. Commissioner Dick.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Gammy.
Here.
I thought I saw her here. Commissioner Mazza.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Neill.
Here.
Thank you. And Commissioner Wu.
Present.
Thank you so much. I'm going to read through today's agenda, and it is as follows. Agenda item A is approval of minutes. Agenda item B is correspondence. Agenda item C is hearing and action. Under hearing and action today, we have seven items. And then agenda item D is the director's report. I will move forward, and under agenda item A, approval of commission minutes. Commissioners, we are in receipt of minutes from July 15, 2025. Do I have a motion from the floor to approve unless we need any edits?
I'll move.
All right, Commissioner Mazza moved. Second was Commissioner Dick.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Commissioner Blackwell, thank you so much. Now I'll do roll call. Commissioner Blackwell.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Burton Falk, aye. Commissioner Dick.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Gammy. That might, is Commissioner Gammy there? But I'm just, she might have technical difficulty. Commissioner Mazza.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Neill.
Aye.
Thank you. And Commissioner Wu.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. It passes. We are moving on to agenda item B, which is correspondence. Correspondence for July 29, 2025 is as follows. This is Council Bill 2025-1417, rezoning Horseman School. There's correspondence from Paul Laurie. This is the field at Hazelwood Green. We are in receipt of correspondence from Sonia Tillman, Hazelwood Initiative, Tim Smith, Center of Life. That concludes the correspondence for July 25, or 29, 2025. Moving on to agenda item C, hearing and action. I'm going to read in each of the items for today, and then we'll move to item number one. Item number one, under hearing and action, is BDA-2025-04652 at 1201 Wiley Avenue. Item number two, under hearing and action, is DCP-HN-2025-00140 at 2608 Penn Avenue. Item number three, under hearing and action, is DCP-ZDR-2024-00328 at 900 Freeport Road. Item number four is DCP-MPZC-2025-00159, which is Council Bill 2025-1938. Item number five, under hearing and action, at 4942 Gloucester Street. Item number six, under hearing and action, is DCP-MPZC-2025-00129, Council Bill 2025-1417 at 2819 Shadland Avenue. Item number seven, under hearing and action, outdoor retail sales and service legislation. Moving on to?
I just wanted to clarify that item number two for hearing and action is being postponed. Do we have a date certain for that? So until September 9th? So we will not be hearing item number two, that's 2608 Penn Avenue.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair O'Neill. Moving back to item number one, under hearing and action, which is BDA-2025-04652 at 1201 Wiley Avenue. This is a high wall sign for Citizens Live at the Wiley Theater in the Lower Hill. Presenting is Mr. Fraker.
And before he starts, I will be recusing.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I will read in the case and then turn it over to the applicant team. This is project development plan application, BDA 2025-04652 for the installation of a high wall sign and low wall signage on the new Citizens Live at the Wiley Theater venue in the Lower Hill District. Per code section 909.01R5 and 919.03.m7.c, only the name of the building or business shall be mounted higher than 40 feet above grade and shall not exceed a face area of 2% of the exposed facade area. The applicant has demonstrated compliance with these code requirements as the proposed high wall sign is 301 square feet, and the facade would allow up to 302 square feet. The sign reads Citizens Live at the Wiley. The proposed sign package also includes signs mounted lower than 40 feet. Of these, the electronic marquee sign was initially reviewed as a major public destination facility, electronic sign, which required review by the zoning board of adjustment as a special exception. But it was determined at the zoning board of adjustment hearing that the facility may not qualify as the major public destination facility. Therefore, that sign will be reviewed as a regular public destination facility, wall-mounted sign, and subject to the 919.03.m7.b standards, along with the low wall signage. In total, the low wall signage proposed is compliant with the code at 145 total square feet on the south facade and 196 square feet on the west facade. A development activities meeting was held with the community groups in the Hill District on June 16, 2025. A copy of the DIM report is attached to your materials. The recommended motion is that the City Planning Commission of the City of Pittsburgh approves the project development plan, BDA 2025-04652, based on the application filed by Colano Design, with the following condition, that the final construction plans, including site plans and elevations, be reviewed and approved by the zoning administrator prior to issuing their record of zoning approval. With that, I'll turn it over to the applicant team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fraker. I'm Bill Colano here on behalf of Live Nation for Pittsburgh's newest entertainment venue, Citizens Live at the Wiley, and it is on the site of the former Civic Arena. And if we start in the bottom right, we'll see that special SP 11 district where the arena used to be in the red dotted line. The building is the red rectangle in the center. If we go to the top of the drawing, we'll see that that red rectangle encompasses part of the block, and the enlargement of that is on the left. And currently, it is parking, and as the site and development gets built out, that may become a structured parking garage. We are allowed two types of signage, signage above 40 feet and signage below 40 feet. So our red line for high wall signage is based on 2% of the building facade. And as Mr. Fraker said, we are at 301 square feet in our 302 square foot allowance. For low wall signage, we have just two facades worth. The west facade faces the city, the south facade faces the south side direction. And the. And the code gives us 3% of the building facade, but then takes away and caps it at 200 square feet. So we are under 200 square feet for each of those facades. High wall signage. The code is here for a bit of housekeeping. As was mentioned, we can have a sign above 40 feet. That is 2% of the exposed facade, and the graphics will be as depicted in the lower right corner. This is how it's positioned on the facade, and the yellow dotted line is showing us what 40 feet is. The red perimeter shows how we achieved our square footage. And there's a little glamour shot by day. The entire sign will read white, and we have a perforated sign face that will allow the color-changing RGBs to turn it to Citizens brand green in the evening or any other color that would correspond with St. Patrick's Day or Valentine's Day as the city changes color. There's a little entree to the corner entry, and that is low wall signage, which we are going to cover in the next group of images. And again, we're looking at our west facade and south facade, and these signs are limited to 200 square feet per facade. On the west facade, we have a sign for the box office at the extreme left. We have our electronic sign on the canopy, and we have poster boxes that are near ground level. And this is the square footage and showing the layout of each of those components. On the south facade, we have the extension of our wraparound electronic sign. We have another Citizens at the Wiley at the end of that canopy, a couple of poster boxes, and then a private entry door marked that way. Someday, I'm going to figure out exactly where to point this. And that's what the signage looks like with the electronic sign above the other signs and the poster boxes. And that is our presentation for today.
Fantastic. Given that concludes your presentation, at this time, we open the floor for public testimony. If there's anyone here in the room that would like to speak regarding this application, and if not, if there are folks on the line that would like to give testimony. Seeing none? Okay. Thank you. And seeing none in the room as well. At this time, Commissioners, if there's any comment or a motion from the floor?
Motion approved.
All right. Motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
All right, that's Commissioner Gammy. So then we're going to do roll call. Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioner Blackwell.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Burton Falk, aye. Commissioner Dick.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Gammy.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Mazza.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Neill has recused. And Commissioner Wu.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Have a great rest of your day.
Thank you all.
All right. Again, item number two, we will see before us September 9. We are moving on to Agenda... Oh, we might need to let Commissioner O'Neill know she can come back in. Wait, there is a hand raised here and for what? Maybe. Maybe? All right. Maybe for the next item up. So I'm going to read Agenda item three, under hearing and action, in. And it is as follows. DCP-ZDR-2024-00328 at 900 Freeport Road. This is a conditional use for new construction and site work at the Aspen Wall Water Treatment Plant. And this is in the Lincoln-Leamington-Belmar neighborhood. Mr. Fraker will be presenting. Thank you. There's another hand up maybe to get into the presentation here? I just want to make sure that we don't have any delay online.
Yeah, I believe we have the applicant team with their hands ready.
Oh, great. Thank you.
While we are admitting the applicant team, I will go ahead and read in the case. This is conditional use application, DCP-ZDR-2024-00328, filed by Brown and Caldwell on behalf of Pittsburgh Water for the demolition, new construction, and site work for improvements at the Aspen Wall Treatment Plant site. The site is located in the north side of the Allegheny River, and it's adjacent to Aspen Wall Borough and O'Hara Township. The site is bordered by Penn Central Railroad to the north and Allegheny River Trail Park to the west. Per Section 911.02, conditional use approval is required for utility general within the riverfront industrial mixed-use zoning district, which triggers Planning Commission and City Council review. Per the zoning code, the campus is deemed a water-dependent facility. The applicant proposes a new building for chemical storage that would replace the existing fluoride building on the campus. The building would be located within 125 feet of their repairian buffer at 78 feet, but is permitted due to the water-dependent status of the facility. The application also includes an 84-inch Clearwell bypass pipe to be constructed to the south of the existing underground Clearwell. It will tie into the existing inlet and outlet gatehouses and will be in service while the construction takes place on the Clearwell itself. The applicant notes that the construction of the Clearwell bypass necessitates the removal of trees within their repairian buffer. Given the status as a water-dependent facility, the application is not required to meet those repairian buffer standards. So tree removal is not expressly prohibited. Given the necessity of tree removal for the Clearwell bypass construction, city planning staff are allowing the application to proceed if the trees are replaced on-site or funds in lieu of replacement are provided. In this case, the applicant has opted for the funds-in-lie option, which comes out to a total of $636,000 for the just over 2,000 combined inches of trees to be removed. For reference, any tree removed that has a DBH of 12 inches or more must be replaced with equivalent combined total inches diameter of trees removed. And we calculate that based on a 2-inch caliber tree, so $600 per 2-inch caliber tree. Given the sensitive work and tree removal within their repairian buffer and inability of the applicant to replant the trees on-site, city staff have requested that the applicant provide a report or study outlining potential future improvements to the existing concrete revetment along the Allegheny River, adjacent to where the tree removal is proposed. The concrete revetment was noted to be in poor or deteriorated condition in a 2021 study conducted by the Army Corps of Engineer for the City of Pittsburgh. The applicant has provided a change order request that notes that that study will be conducted. It needs to be voted on by Pittsburgh Water. That work could potentially be done as part of the raw water intakes project to be submitted for permitting at a later date. A copy of that change order is attached to your hearing materials. The applicant proposes security fencing around a portion of the perimeter of the site. Security fencing is expressly permitted via 905 of the zoning code. That's 905.04.h.1.a.4. The applicant has indicated they are following federal regulations for that security fencing. A development activities meeting was held with the Lincoln-Leamington Collaborative on May 29, 2024. A copy of the D I M report is attached. The application was reviewed by city planning design staff, and there were not substantial comments. With that, the recommended motion is that the City Planning Commission makes a positive recommendation to City Council on the conditional use application, DCP-ZDR-2024-00328, with the following conditions: that the final construction plans, including site plans and elevations, be reviewed and approved by the zoning administrator prior to issuing their record of zoning approval, and that the applicant pay the established fee in lieu fee for the tree removal prior to issuing their record of zoning approval. With that, I believe we have our applicant team on the Zoom call, so I will turn it over to you all. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Jo. I think if you can move the slide forward. I don't think I have control of it. There we go. My name is Heather Dodson. I am with Brown and Caldwell and in the Consulting Project Manager for the Aspen Wall Clearwell Project on the call. And speaking along with me will be Sonia Sphila, the Associate Project Manager with Pittsburgh Water, and Christine Mandor, who is the owner and architect for Evolve. We also have Rachel Beam, the Chief Engineering Officer with Pittsburgh Water, Barry King, Director of Engineering and Construction, Andy Mitchell, Principal in Charge with Brown and Caldwell, and Gabe Scamla with Evolve as the project architect. We are going to briefly talk about the Water Reliability Plan, then dig into the site description, the design plans, and our project schedule. The next slide, I will hand it over to Sonia.
Thank you, Heather. Good afternoon, everyone. The Water Reliability Plan is a series of multi-generational projects that will modernize large components of our water pumping and distribution system. And these improvements will add redundancy and strengthen our water infrastructure and provide customers with more secure and reliable water services for generations to come. The completion of these projects will ultimately culminate with the complete restoration of the Clearwell. These projects are all required by the state through the consent decree, and this series of projects are an investment of $500 million over the next five years. Next slide, please. Yeah, I think we skipped a slide.
Just one slide back.
One slide back. I know. It's the same, it's the same pictures. Yeah. These slides just show the Brecken Pump Station Improvement Project, as well as the Highland Reservoir Pump Station Project, that have been successfully gone through Planning Commission review and received approval.
Thank you. Back to you, Heather.
All right. If you want to keep moving the slides up, this is just the Clearwell, the existing Clearwell photo from 1908, I believe. So the next slide. Jo did a great job describing what was, what we've gone through so far. The Pittsburgh, the Aspen Wall Pump Station is located completely within the Pittsburgh Water Treatment Plant at 900 Freeport Road. And we, there is no change in use on this site, and because it is a located within the RIV industrial mixed-use, we are coming here for a, for a few different items. But one, this is a water-dependent site, and it also has to meet Homeland Security requirements. The next slide, please. For today's review, we are looking at the site as a water treatment plant, and because it's a new utility, it is a conditional use in the RIV industrial mixed-use zoning code. This site also has an exemption with the chemical building number two, which is within the repairian buffer zone. It is a water-dependent facility, so it is exempt. And this project also achieved administrator exemption on April 30 for the chemical building number two with regards to transparency requirements for a river-facing facade. We do not, we cannot have 50% of the facade with transparency because it is a chemical building and houses chemicals. So next slide, please. All right. I wanted to show the entire treatment plant, with the exception of the sediment basins to the north. Aspen Wall Pump Station is located smack dab in the middle of the Pittsburgh Treatment Plant with the Clearwell stretching out to the west. I also wanted to highlight the Ross Pump Station to the far east. That is the location of the Raw Water Intake Improvement Project that is currently in design, and that design team is responsible for the condition assessment and the report of the concrete revetment that is along the entire Aspen Wall Treatment, or the Aspen Wall Pump Station and the Pittsburgh Water Treatment Plant concrete revetment along Allegheny River. That's over 3,000 linear feet of concrete revetment. So I wanted to show how that is in relation to what our project is. Next slide, please. Just zooming in, this slide is just showing how Aspen Wall sits between, nestled between the Norfolk Southern Railroad, which is pretty active here, and the Allegheny River. The decaying light substation that we show has already been constructed. The old substation that is shown directly to the east of the Aspen Wall Pump Station will be demolished at the end of this project. You'll see the rail spur that goes through the grassy area. That has been decommissioned. So there are no, there are no, nothing inhibiting Pittsburgh Water from removing the rail spurs when they so deem necessary. There are two site accesses, the main treatment plant site access that is just to the east of this photo, and then River Road, which is off of Freeport Road to the far left by the Clearwell Outlet Gate House. Next slide, please. So we're going to look at the site improvements here. The Aspen Wall Pump Station was built in 1912. For this project on the site, we are going to be demolishing the garage and the fluoride building, which were built after, decades after this pump station there, not original to the site or to the plant. And in the place of the fluoride building, we'll be building, constructing chemical building number two. This project will also require a lot of utility relocations, gas water, sewer, and stormwater, as well as concrete and asphalt pavement replacement around the building itself. We will also be doing some stormwater improvements, which I'll talk about later. Next slide, please. With the building itself, we will be replacing the windows and the roof. It should be noted that the windows and the roof of the Aspen Wall Pump Station were replaced in the 1950s. They are not original to the building. We will also be cleaning the exterior and interior masonry. We'll be doing any needed repairs to the masonry as we move along. And that will include the terracotta cornice and gutters to the, at the upper, right below the roof. Their entrance archway will also be cleaned up and made to look beautiful again. This project is under Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act, and Pittsburgh Water has a mitigation plan signed agreement with State Historic Preservation Office that the, our consulting parties had also reviewed and agreed to. This project also includes... This project also includes that it must be done and completed in accordance with the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. So that's with the exterior of the building. Next slide, please. We are also improving the access to the north, including two accessible entrances at the north, or one entrance at the north, and then another entrance to the southeast of the building, which is where we're going to be. Well, we can talk about this in the next slide, but we have interior ramps and also a, an elevator in the south for the office space that we're going to be putting into the south half of the building. The elevator will go from the first to the second floor. Next slide, please. Additionally, on the inside of the facility, the point of this project is to replace the four existing pumps, their motors, switchgear, and desection and discharge piping, upgrade the electrical power to medium voltage, replace the existing electrical room with a new electrical room. And as I mentioned in the previous slide, converting the open floor space that's in the south half of the building to a two-story office space with cubicles, office space, office rooms, and meeting rooms for Pittsburgh Water employees to use as temporary work spots when they're on the plant. We talked about the new chemical building that will house the orthophosphate and the fluoride tanks. It was already mentioned that the perimeter fencing in this general area will be replaced with eight-foot-high fencing in accordance with Homeland Security requirements, and all exterior electrical HVAC equipment will be screened. Next slide. The second aspect of this project is the Clearwell bypass. The Clearwell was built in 1908, and in order to improve the drinking water, Pittsburgh Water in the coming project is looking at either replacing the existing Clearwell or updating the Clearwell to provide redundancy to Pittsburgh's drinking water. This is part of their consent decree requirements. In order to take this existing Clearwell offline, we need to construct a Clearwell bypass that will connect to the inlet and outlet gate houses, some surface. It's approximately 1,575 linear feet of steel pipe of 84- and 144-inch diameter piping. We do need to, as mentioned, remove the trees along the south area of the Clearwell from the, and there is not any space on this plant to replace those trees. So as Joe mentioned, we are doing a fee in lieu of and have completed the alternative compliance, alternative landscape compliance forms. These black locust trees will be removed, and once the bypass is installed, we will be adding erosion and control matting and make sure that the, the seed is a steep slope seed mixture that is no, no melt, and it is in accordance with PennDOT standards. It's a seed mixture that is approved by PennDOT. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Christine so she can talk more about the buildings and the site layout and texture.
Thanks, Heather. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I will give you a little bit of site context and show you some images of the building before and after. This is the north facade, which is the formal entry to the building. This is the facade that faces the Freeport Road and the shopping center. You'll see that it's in need of some repair, and so what Heather described is going to go a long way to stabilizing this structure that was luckily built to be quite sturdy back in 1912. So, next slide. This is an image of the site from the south on the river, and you can see what the revetment is that Heather referred to, and that is part of a future project, as she said. You can see from the river, our building is seen, the ground plan is not well seen, but the building, upper, upper area is seen. On the far left, you'll see the chemical building, the fluoride building that's going to be taken down. Against the building on the right, you'll see the garage that is going to be removed. And then in the far right, those are the other existing buildings on campus that Heather showed in her site plan. Next slide. This is an image looking west from the entry road on the site, and you can see that there is, the building is down there, that you're looking across the old railroad track siding, and the electrical equipment that's near the building is the equipment that will be removed. This is an image of the existing fluoride building that will be removed. Next slide. Thank you. This is the east side of the building, and it's pretty straightforward. It has a couple entries for service and an entry for a man door for access. The south entry, another image of it with showing the small service road in front and the main entry in that bump-out area. And then on the south face, this is an image of the existing garage that's going to be demoed, not a very sturdy building built sometime after the original building was built. So, next slide. So with that, here are some befores and afters. The existing image, similar to what you've seen previously with the Duquesne Light Substation removed, you will see not much changes. The building, the windows pattern changes, but actually a lot changes in terms of quality and repair and restoration of masonry. You will notice on the left side of the building, some gray air, low structures, that is where there is equipment that must be placed outside the building. And so we have a screen that acknowledges the historic character of the building. I'll show you a little bit more on that later, wherever we have this ground equipment. So, next slide. Again, this is a similar view, but it's actually across on Freeport Road, and so this is about the best view you'll get from off-site. Between you and the building are the railroad tracks, a security fence, and then you can see the ceremonial entrance in the image that we showed previously with the, some of the equipment that's on the ground. Okay, next slide. This is a view that is, is not purposefully obscured, but it is a view from Freeport Road where St. Margaret's Drive comes out. The trees are owned by the railroad, so we have no plans to do anything with them, and this is the view that you get or you don't get from that location. So, next slide. This is a view from the other side, from the northwest corner of the building, again showing the integration of some screening around some ground-mounted equipment, and the rest of the building has no major changes except for repair, replacement, and restoration. Next slide. This is a view from out in the middle of the river, where you can just barely see some of the ground-mounted equipment and the screening that is there, as well as the, on the left side, you see the new chemical building, which houses the fluoride and orthophosphate. And, and yeah, that's, that's the south face of it. So, next slide. Again, from the river, you can see the revetment, the chemical building on the left, some of the ground-mounted equipment and screening on the right. And then you can see the existing treatment plant on the far right in the distance. Next slide. From the other direction, looking northwest, similarly, some of the ground-mounted equipment and screening and the chemical building. Next slide. And then a little note about the materials, I think there were some questions on this. The material selection really follows what's on-site already. So the building is made of sandstone, a light-colored brick, and some metal detailing, as well as some masonry detailing. So the facade takes its cue from this. The chemical building is not celebrated, it's not the focus, the main building restoration is the focus. So it kind of shares the same material palette, except for where the materials have to address some of the concerns of the chemicals inside, in which case they're fiberglass. Really, you won't perceive any of that material selection. It'll look like, like conventional metal doors from, from the distance that it's viewed. So, next slide. And these are some of the, some of the materials, brick, you know, similar brick facade, sandstone base, picking up some of the banding and recessed, recessed brick details in that building. The mechanical screen design to kind of comply with some of the historic requirements is picking up a detail, evoking the original door details, and is predominantly kind of powder-coated sheet metal with varying degrees of masonry or metal with this pattern on it to meet the adjacent context of the building. So, next slide. And Heather, I think I'm back to you.
Yep. In terms of storm water management, we are constructing an R tank to the south of the building. There really isn't any space on this site for surface facilities. We are installing water quality inserts at all of the inlets, and the roof will follow Cool Roof standards. Next slide. Excuse me. The project site constraints, obviously Norfolk Southern Railroad and Freeport Road to the north, there are two accessible access roads that the contractors will have available access to. But the big, the big constraint is that this is an active treatment plant, and so the contractors will have to work closely with Pittsburgh Water Operations, and people are walking in and out of the Aspen Well Pump Station on an hourly, daily basis. So, next slide, please. In terms of the entrances, the main entrance for the contractors, contractors will be the, the treatment plant main entrance. When you enter and turn right into the Pittsburgh Water Treatment Plant, all contractors will go right towards the Aspen Well Pump Station or go west, and the Pittsburgh Water staff will go left to keep everyone separated and keep traffic moving. The second construction access will be utilizing River Avenue that is to the far west of the Clearwell, and contractors can use that to, during construction of the Clearwell bypass and as a secondary access road. All work, all construction work is completed within the Pittsburgh Treatment Plant, and the general project schedule for the contractors will be a Monday through Friday from 7:00 to 5:00 p.m. And next slide. In terms of the schedule, we have completed, Pittsburgh Water has their PADEP Public Water Supply Permit and their Chapter 102 NPDS Construction Permit. As I mentioned before, they have their mitigation plan agreement with SHPO and are finalizing the building permits for the Aspen Well Pump Station and for the chemical building. In terms of the construction, the contractor award was in April of 2025, and the construction NTP will be August 2025. The anticipated completion date is late September 2029, early 20, or late, late 2029 or early 2023 in that timeframe, and there are deadlines can, that they must meet, milestones that must be met for the consent decree. And finally, Pittsburgh Water has a website, if you're on the next slide, that discusses their water reliability plan, and Pittsburgh Water also does community meetings every month throughout the community to talk about their reliability plan and active projects and active construction. So with that, I'll turn it back over to City of Pittsburgh Planning, and if there are any questions, we're happy to answer for you.
Thank you very much for the very thorough presentation. At this time, we open the floor for public testimony. Is there anyone here in the room that would like to speak regarding this application? Or anyone online, please raise your hand if you're here for this application. No? All right. Commissioners, at this time, if there's any comment, please remember that this is a recommendation, and there are conditions in our reports. Are there any comments or a motion? Don't all holler at once.
I'll make a motion to approve, unless there are comments.
Is there a comment? Commissioner Wu? Okay, so that was Commissioner Gammy for a motion, correct?
Yep.
Thank you. And a second, Commissioner Mazza. All right, let's do roll call on this, and that's Commissioner Blackwell.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Burton Falk?
Aye.
Commissioner Dick? Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you. I saw your head shaking at the same time. Commissioner Gammy?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Mazza?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Neil?
Aye.
Thank you. And Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
All right, thank you so much. It carries, so have a great rest of your day, and thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
All right, so that concludes item number three under hearing and action. We're going to move to item number four under hearing and action, and I just want to say to everybody in the room, you guys are troopers, you're hanging in there. I know this is a bit of a long day. So, item number four, DCP-MPZC-2025-00159. This is Council Bill 2025-1938, and this is a zoning map amendment for Fort Pitt Park in Garfield. Mr. Consila is going to present this afternoon.
Thank you, Chair Burton Falk. So Council Bill 2025-1938 was introduced at City Council by Councilman Carr Mosley on June 17th, 2025, and referred to the Planning Commission on June 25th, 2025 for the commission's report and recommendation. A copy of the legislative text is attached to the report submitted to Commissioners. The legislation proposes to rezone several parcels that are currently zoned, R1DM, which is single-unit detached residential moderate density, and rezone those to the P Parks District. There are also three parcels that are currently zoned, R1DH, which is single-unit detached residential high-density, rezone those to the Parks District, and one parcel, Parcel 50 C350, from RP, which is residential planned unit developments, to Parks. The parcels involved in this proposed zone change are generally bound by Hillhurst Street, North West Hilda Street, Breezeport Street, and Shunley Avenue, and we're in the Garfield neighborhood. The total area of the proposed rezoning is approximately 11.6 acres. Enactment of this rezoning will permit the involved parcels to be developed for uses permitted in the Parks District. The Fort Pitt Field and Park Master Plan was completed by the Department of City Planning in 2021, and that followed a community engagement process with the neighborhood. A proposed rezoning of this area was actually one of the recommendations made in this master plan, so this council bill is essentially to enact that recommendation. Pashik and MTR, on behalf of the Department of Public Works, submitted an application for site improvements to the Department of City Planning, so that is essentially based on that. Those cover a lot of the parcels that are included in this rezoning. Per Section 922.05.b2, an application to amend, the boundaries of the zoning map may be proposed by City Council, the Planning Commission, or the owner of the subject property, or the owner's agent. In this case, this was In this case, this was a, this is a zoning map amendment that is coming from City Council and has since been referred to the Planning Commission for review and recommendation. Uh, the Planning Commission has ninety days upon receipt of the completed, uh, application for a zoning map amendment to make a recommendation for approval or denial. The legislation was referred on June twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. So the hearing date of today, July twenty ninth, twenty twenty five, complies with that ninety day requirement. There's a development activities meeting held, uh, with the Bloomfield Garfield Corporation on June twenty sixth, twenty twenty five. And a copy of the, the summary report of that meeting is, is attached to the report submitted to commissioners. Per section nine twenty two dot O one dot C dot one and nine twenty two dot O one dot C dot two, property owners within one hundred and fifty feet of the proposed zone change area were notified of the proposal. And there was also posted notices that are posted around the site, uh, and those occurred uh, twenty one days in advance of the hearing. So that complies with the noticing requirements of the zoning code. And Planning Commission shall review the proposed zoning map amendments in accordance with the criteria listed under section nine twenty two dot O five dot F. And a copy of those, uh, review criteria are included with the Commissioner's report. Uh, the recommended motion from staff is that the Planning Commission make a positive recommendation to City Council, uh, based on, for Council Bill twenty twenty five dash nineteen thirty eight, uh, which would include, which would rezone, uh, these parcels, uh, from these various residential districts to Parks District. And with that, I'll hand it over to, uh, the applicant as well to run through this presentation.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, um, and all. Uh, my colleague Paul really summarized, uh, the bulk of this presentation pretty well. So I'm kind of here to show some visuals. Um, but. Okay. So a little bit of an overview of the project team that's been involved in this work. Um, Kara Smith from D P W, uh, is the lead project manager. Myself, Isabella Gross, uh, Principal Planner and Sustainability and Resilience in the City Planning Department. Um, Shoshana Davidson, a community planner, and then Paul, who just spoke. Um, we've been working closely with Councilman Mosley, um, as well as several stakeholders, including the Garfield Gators, Brothers and Sisters Emerging, Bloomfield Garfield Corporation, the Housing Authority, and Pittsburgh Public Schools. Consultants are listed on the bottom of the slide. Sorry, there's like a little bit of a lag, um, on the clicker. So here's an aerial, uh, of the existing Fort Pitt Park. Um, there is, the majority of the park is the Garfield Gator Field, um, football field, a grass football field with, um, some bleachers. And then in the back, kind of northeastern corner of the park, uh, there's basketball court and, um, some walking paths and, uh, in and around the park. So the master plan for Fort Pitt Park was completed by the Department of City Planning in twenty twenty one. Uh, and it includes a comprehensive study of all features within Fort Pitt Park, um, to create a unified cohesive design. Um, it builds off the open space P G H plan, um, as well as a Garfield twenty thirty plan in the Garfield Green Zone, which really calls for kind of the expansion of the park as well as, uh, the added trails that we're, we're adding to the, um, park expansion and rezoning. Uh, and the, the plan is now in D P W's hand, hands who are implementing, uh, this work. So this is a bit of a master plan proposed improvements. Uh, things are like slightly subject to change. However, um, the football field is, is a big lift. Uh, redoing the football field and the bleachers, um, as well as adding, you know, concession stand, um, upgraded basketball courts and, uh, playing a playground area, as well as expanding the parking lot and making it a more efficient use of space. Uh, so currently phases one, two, and three outlined on the map, uh, are, um, in design. Um, and so as I stated, uh, a lot of it is around the football field, including lighting, uh, site circulation for the parking lot and the, the whole space itself. Um, stormwater management, uh, is a big part of the conversation and then, um, grading in phase, in the phase three area to complete kind of a, an additional practice field because this field is in really high use, um, especially in the summer and fall months. Uh, so the master plan recommendations, um, resulting kind of a couple of different, um, expansion and rezoning, um, uh, options. We've, uh, stuck with, you know, not the complete expansion, but rather, um, leaving some parcels available for, for development or otherwise. Um, but, you know, uh, adding a couple of parcels at the southern and western ends of the park, and then also rezoning all of these parcels, none of which are zoned park currently. Um, so the current park is, uh, comprised of nine parcels. Um, and currently makes up nine point five acres, I think, um, to answer Commissioner Dick's question from last, from the briefing. We added a cu- about, um, uh, what, two point one acres. So the total rezoned area will, uh, total to one point six acres. Um, if everything, you know, is approved, um, couple more maps to illustrate the new rezoning, if it switches. Um, here we go. Yeah. So these are kind of the units that we will, uh, these, the parcels that we will be, um, you know, that will comprise the total area of the park as well as their current zoning designation and final parks zoning designation. So currently, a lot of the, the mix, the mix of the residential zones that primarily, um, are on the parcels currently restrict, uh, park and recreation uses. Um, fields and with seating and concession stands are currently not permitted under the, the residential zoning. And the park zoning would just allow for all of that and, uh, make approval processes for any current or future upgrades to the fields and park much quicker and, and straightforward. Um, as for bulk requirements, the current and proposed zonings are, are largely the same. Um, the primary, the primary change is to allow for structures, uh, and upgrades that are associated with parks, such as lighting, fields, courts, and other amenities. Um. I'm so sorry. There we go. Uh, yep, we're at the current stage of the process at the Planning Commission hearing. Um, it will be followed by City Council public hearing and council vote. And that concludes my presentation. Um, but if I may, I, uh, would like to add that just being able to spend time at the park and hanging out with, um, uh, co- head coach Bob Jones really kind of brings the place to life. I think the Garfield Gators have a really prominent role in the Garfield community as well as, you know, beyond just the neighborhood of Garfield. And, um, you know, as a soccer coach myself, I really am inspired by the coach, the, the work that Coach Jones is doing and, and I would love to come to a game in the fall and encourage all of you to do the same. So, yeah.
Awesome. Well, thank you for that investment and I'm definitely sharing. So since that concludes the presentation, at this time, we open the floor for public testimony. Is there anyone here in the room or online? Uh, and if there are any hands raised or raise your hand if you'd like to.
Can you hear me? Okay. Yes, there is a hand raised. Um, Kwame Kinsel, you can unmute. You have three minutes to provide your statement. Please state and spell your name for the record.
Hey, everyone. Good afternoon. My name is Kwame Kinsel, K U W A M E, Kwame. Kinsel, K I N S E L.
Welcome.
All right. Um, so as I said, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Kwame Kinsel, and I have the honor of, uh, serving as the Special Programs Manager of the Bloomfield Garfield Corporation. Uh, I am here today to express our full support for the Fort Pitt Implementation Plan and, um, the investments that you guys are bringing to the Garfield neighborhood. Uh, with that being said, one of the more exciting elements of this plan is the, uh, commitment to green infrastructure and the planting of new trees and play spaces throughout our neighborhood. Um, as we, uh, face increasingly unpredictable weather and air quality conditions, um, these solutions that we have for the space are not just aesthetically pleasing. They are vital to the health and well-being of our residents. Um, especially with our, uh, investments into things like stormwater infrastructure, uh, trees and green spaces to improve our public health and creating areas for us to meet, congregate, and play. Um, these investments for our blocks and our families and seniors alike are becoming increasingly more important. Um, our organization is protect, or parti- our organization is particularly encouraged by the plan's inclusive engagement strategies. Youth, elders, longtime residents, and new neighbors alike all had a seat at the table for these conversations. And we believe that's how community planning should be done with transparency, partnership, and mutual respect of the community. Uh, at the Bloomfield Garfield Corporation, we are committed to building equitable pathways to opportunity and sustainability for every resident. And the Fort Pitt Plan and implement, the Fort Pitt Implementation Plan aligns with that mission and allows us to do that work alongside our city partners, funders, and most importantly, our community. Uh, I would like to be clear and say that, uh, the work that's being done in Garfield is not helping us to be discovered, but it is helping us to become more restored, resourced, and respected as a community. And the Fort Plit Plan is a strong step in that direction. And we urge support and continue funding and implementation of this plan so that we can ensure that Garfield has the amenities, uh, for our current residents as well as future generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Kwame Kinsel, for the testimony and for being patient waiting today. We know it's been a long day. Um, any additional hands raised?
There are no other hands.
All right. Uh, and none in here, Commissioners?
Hi. Um, just going on the record because of the criteria that we review when we're looking at a map amendment. Um, I think this is already shown in the visuals that were provided and submitted and then also, um, your presentation. But, uh, you know, the proposal for the rezoning is consistent with the existing uses on the property. So it allows those to continue, uh, which makes it appropriate to zone it differently and as a park, um, which allows those kind of unique uses as compared to the surrounding residential zoning, uh, to continue. Um, the maps show how it's distinguishable. Um, also, it is always great when we see something called out in a plan and the zoning is very consistent. It makes it easier for us to, uh, make a recommendation. Um, so thank you for that. Thank you for the clear presentation. Um, and then finally, just because whenever we have a, uh, kind of zoning district that is not expanding a park or, or an existing zoning district, we want to be cognizant of the uh, potential for spot zoning, which I don't think is present here. Um, as I mentioned, uh, there's a reason to treat these properties as distinguishable from the surrounding areas, uh, which we have sufficient evidence of, um, and, you know, compatible with the, uh, character and use of those parcels. So.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you.
And thank you. Anything else? Uh, or do we have a motion from the floor for positive recommendation? Commissioner Dick, is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
All right.
With many fond memories of having worked with the youngsters at Fort Pitt Elementary School, I, uh, recommend that this, uh, motion be approved.
All right. Fantastic. So that's a motion from, uh, Commissioner Dick. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, from Commissioner Wu. I'll do roll call. Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Burton Falk, aye. Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Gammy?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Mazza?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Neil?
Aye.
Thank you. And Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a great rest of your day. Good job. All right. Moving on to the next agenda item under hearing and action. Again, online and those in the room, good job. You're hanging in tough. Item, uh, D C P dash Z D R dash twenty twenty four dash zero two nine zero zero at forty nine forty two Gloucester Street. This is the construction of new multi-sport athletic field and temporary parking lots in the Hazelwood neighborhood. Presenting that here this afternoon is Mr. Consila.
And before he starts, I will be recusing on this item. I'll be back after this.
Thank you, Vice Chair O'Neil.
Thank you, Chair Brandon Falk. This is an application for our final land development plan or F L D P. D C P dash Z D R dash twenty twenty four dash zero two nine zero zero. Thus filed by Tishman Spire on behalf of the property owner, Almono L P, for construction of a multi-sport athletic field and temporary parking lots. The application proposes to construct a new multi-sport resident, multi-sport athletic field with entrances from the urban open space parcel on block fifty six and from Lidle Street, which is, uh, proposed to be constructed at a later date. The applicant proposes to enhance the urban open space parcel in accordance with the preliminary land development plan. Additionally, the applicant intends to utilize the existing paved area on block sixty four and provide additional parking in the area west of the future Lidle Street for use as a temporary parking area. The site is located in the Hazelwood Green Specialty Plan District, or S P ten. Projects within the S P ten district must comply with the requirements of the zoning code, section nine oh nine dot O one dot Q, and the Hazelwood Green Preliminary Land Development Plan. The proposed use is a recreation and entertainment outdoor general use, which is permitted in all development districts in the S P ten district and is considered a commercial use. The temporary surface parking areas are permitted in the S P ten district in accordance with the requirements of nine oh nine dot O one dot Q dot four dot C and section nine, in section four point four point two point E of the P L D P. The applicant has submitted responses to ensure compliance with the requirements of both of these sections for those temporary surface parking areas. The Planning Commission approved amendments to the P L D P on July twenty third, twenty twenty four, establishing and regulating a new type E building type to accommodate sports, recreation, and similar types of spectator events. There are no, there were no requests to the zoning board of adjustment on this case. Design staff determined that review of the project by, by C D A P was not required. And a memo from design staff regarding this decision is attached to the report submitted to commissioners. The conceptual stormwater management plan for the whole Hazelwood Green Development, uh, was approved by the Department of City Planning. The applicant is currently in the process of receiving stormwater management approval for this specific site within the, within the master plan area. The applicant is in the process of receiving curb cut approvals for the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure for the entrances to the temporary parking lots. The applicant is providing the required amount of protected bicycle parking spaces for regular occupants and the, the required amount for unprotected spaces for, uh, peak visitors to the site. The project is compliant with the development standards of the S P ten district, build two zone, transparency and height requirements. There is a development active, activities meeting that was held on June twenty fourth, twenty twenty five with Hazelwood Initiative, who is the R C O, uh, for this area. And a summary report of that D A N is attached to the report to commissioners. This is a project located in the Greater Hazelwood Neighborhood Plan area. Planning staff determined that the proposed project is in compliance with that neighborhood plan. And a copy of that compliance letter is attached to the report to commissioners. Under section nine twenty two dot eleven dot C dot two, the Planning Commission shall review a final land development plan in accordance with the criteria under this subsection. The applicant has also submitted a memo, uh, describing how they, how this project complies with the review criteria. And that memo is also attached to the report submitted to commissioners. So based on, uh, on the criteria, uh, the staff recommends, uh, approval of this final land development plan. D C P dash Z D R dash twenty twenty four dash zero two nine zero zero, based on the application filed by Tishman Spire on behalf of Almono P, with the conditions that final construction plans and site plans are approved by the zoning administrator prior to final zoning approval. With that, I'll hand it over to the applicant team to give their presentation.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commission and staff. Good to see you again. Thank you for the opportunity to present again our next chapter in the evolution of Hazelwood Green. My name is Austin Gelbart and I'm a Managing Director at Tishman Spire broadly responsible for development at Hazelwood Green. Now is a very exciting time for Pittsburgh and for Hazelwood Green. We're here to present plans for Hazelwood Green's eighth project since its rebirth. Imagined and made real through the generous support and decades of hard work by the Almono Partners. This is the fifth project we have brought to the commission in the five years that I've been working here. Getting to know this great city, which my family and I are now proud to call home. Sorry, trying to advance the slides.
That's okay. You're not the only one. We might need new batteries.
No, there we go. Hazelwood Green is a place where Pittsburghers best come to do what can't be done anywhere else. We are a testing ground for invention and unique partnerships and a place rich with beautiful green spaces. These are the threads that tie together the Roundhouse, CMU's Robotics Innovation Center, Pitt's Bioforge, RADC's Mill 19, our collection of mixed income multifamily buildings and the project we're here for today, the Field at Hazelwood Green. That's our working title. The Field at Hazelwood Green is a collaboration between Tishman Spire, the Richard King Mellon Foundation and the Pittsburgh Steelers. The field is designed as a multipurpose, multi-sport regional asset. One that will serve as a vibrant hub for youth developments and community wellness, addressing the region's need for more fields for team sports. The field will provide organizations a space for team sports, practices, training, activities and events, as well as support coaching and certification opportunities. Project will foster stronger and healthier athletes, teams and communities. And give us all a good reason to turn away from our phones and be together outside throughout the year. We want to thank the incredible generosity of the Rooney family and the Steelers project team. We are especially grateful to the collaboration of our partners in the neighborhood. The Hazelwood Initiative, Center of Life, GHCC, and especially Poor Law and the Cobras. Thank you to James and Sandra. Presenting for you today, I am joined by David White from Populous, the project architect, and by Joe Hackett from LBA Landscape Architecture. One more advancement. Okay. Today's presentation is the next step in a robust public engagement process that started about 18 months ago as the project was first conceived. From the outset, the project has been shaped by the voices of the community and city. Our collaborative organized listening sessions, workshops and open forums and the resulting public community engagement report that QR code will lead you to reflects all the input from the community. We're proud to report that the majority of the community's suggestions have been incorporated into this, into the design and operation of the project all to the fullest extent possible. One sec. I'm going to have to go back. Okay. Similarly, Tishman Spire continues with the development of Hazelwood Green, regularly referring to the community's neighborhood plan, the Greater Hazelwood Neighborhood Plan. And we are scoring our projects against the community's objectives. We are pleased to report that this project aligns strongly with that plan, delivering on such goals as weaving together the site and the community, providing access to open spaces, supporting health and wellness, supporting the local youth and enhancing the area with activity and vibrancy. The field is being placed on Hazelwood Avenue, two blocks down from the existing park, Plaza Park. That's a, I guess I can't point here, but it's the park to the right of a long red building that's open to the public today. Two blocks from CMU's new project, two blocks from our new multifamily block, right at the entrance to Hazelwood Green as close to the community as possible. So with that, I will turn it over to David White from Populous, who will walk you through the design vision and details of the project and we look forward to your questions. Thanks, David.
Thank you, Austin, and hello, Commissioners. It's good to be here again. One of the other considerations that we made is the site. Come back. There we go. All right. One of the other considerations that was important in locating the project on the site where it is, is, is the weather and the proximity to the river. We wanted it farther away from the river to avoid winds and cold air sweeping down that would maximize the number of months that the field is playable. Let's talk a little bit more about the. There, there's the site. Am I going the wrong way here?
Yes.
All right. So the centerpiece of the project is the playing field and stadium itself. We have seating for about 3,000. That's part of the project. It's surrounded by a boundary structure that complies with the various openness requirements that are in the PLDP. And it has all of the features that you would expect to see in a community stadium, including a scoreboard. It's got sports lighting that will be compliant with the standards there. It has also an existing parking garage on the southern end of the site that will be converted to locker rooms and other amenities for fans and the teams that play there. Just want to note that there will be parking on the existing pavement around that garage itself. And that the, as you can see here in the slide, the lot immediately to the west will be developed as a temporary parking lot with porous paving. So crushed gravel there. The right of way for Lidle Street will continue through. There will be a connection of crushed stone between the new sidewalk at the west side of the stadium and Tecumseh. And as noted previously, we've got significant bicycle parking available around the site. The project also has a permanent concession stand that's located on the Lidle Street frontage. Just to look a little closer at some of these elevations. This is the view from the future Lidle Street, so from the west. And you can see that there is a large elevation there showing the concession stand. We'll talk a little bit more about that in detail following these elevation slides. Just note that we've got the boundary structure there with a six foot high fence. Changes in materials and 89% on most of these, I think it's 85 on this one total transparency. We'll flip through a few more of these elevation slides. Hazelwood Avenue, this is the view from the north. You can see the park there. Kind of between the street and the stadium. We'll talk more about that in a couple of slides here. And here's that concession stand. So we're early in the design phase. None of these material selections are final, but this is the palette that we expect to see. Sort of CMU brushed concrete for the foundations and some metal panels to lighten it up as you get higher with the color scheme there, sort of muted grays. And this will be coordinated with these piers that march along the boundary structure. Here's the elevation that shows the press box. So the press box will be part of the bleacher seating. It will have a similar materiality on that side. The press box itself will be a corrugated metal panel construction. Talk a little bit about entry sequence and security. Austin already mentioned that we're right there at one of the major gateways to the district. We have the red arrows that show where we'd expect people to arrive for a game from the parking areas and from the rest of the district to the north. There will be people that work here on a daily basis. Operator will manage the facility and people will be in and out on non-event days. So that blue arrow there shows that they'll, they'll come in off of Gloucester Street. And then there's a connection between the field itself and the garage, which will be renovated to house amenities for people visiting the site. It's an aerial view here of what the completed project will look like. And we'll now talk more about the park.
Joe Hackett from LBA Landscape Architecture. The, there's actually two separate parcels here. There's parcel 56, which is going to become the park and parcel 60, which is the field. Parcel 56 is part of the urban open space network. It'll be related to, to other parks. And it's immediately adjacent to Hazelwood Avenue. And what's great about this is Hazelwood Avenue is the primary entrance in. If you live in the community, you're probably coming in Hazelwood Avenue. Buses turn on Hazelwood Avenue. That's, that's the primary entrance. So having a park there is a really great place to, to sort of kick off what happens in Hazelwood Green. To have a place to gather, to have a place for folks to, to meet, get some shade, get out of the sun. It's, it's the perfect place for a park. So you see an overview of the park here. It's the, plan's now rotated, so I apologize for that. So Hazelwood Avenue is to the bottom, future Lidle Street to the right, Gloucester Street to the left. On the far left, you see the railroad tracks. If you could go off the screen to the far left, you'd get to Second Avenue. So the park is a series of spaces, sort of alternating between paved and green. So on the far right, there's a, there's a paved plaza that lets you into the stadium. Immediately to the left of that is, is a green space with trees and sort of grassy mounds. Immediately to the left of that is a pavilion, which, which is paved around it. Immediately to the left of that is another sort of larger green space with lawn and mounds. And then on the far left toward Gloucester Street is a, is a plaza space as well for, for seating. So it, it alternates between paved and paved and green. And I'm going to back up for one second. So some of the other things that we're trying to do with the park is, is make it feel special and different. So along Hazelwood Avenue, we're actually going to double the tree line. There, there are trees that are along the street. Now the street, street was built years ago. So we're actually going to double that tree line, make it feel separated from the street. Parallel to Hazelwood Avenue, you can see that sort of slightly darker colored band. That's a sidewalk of slightly different color, different texture. And it links to gateway structures. These gateway structures are made of steel and they will recall the historic buildings that were formerly on the mill. And those gateway structures become the art component for the project. There's two of them, one at either end. So as you come in from Second Avenue, you see one. If you're coming from page south up Hazelwood Avenue to the stadium, you see another one. Whoops. These are a series of cross sections through the park. So you can see how the park changes and what the, what the different conditions are. The one on the top, section A, is closer to Gloucester Street. So if you're entering from the community, you see this gateway structure on the right. It's this steel frame. It has a, an angle that's very similar to, to some of the mill buildings. It'll, it'll have that sort of industrial assembled quality, very similar to what you would have seen historically on the site. There's also a series of stone benches. Again, stone blocks are a material that was used in the mill for, for decades. But you can see Hazelwood Avenue on the right, we're doubling the tree line, creating a sort of shaded place to sit. And then on the far left, you see the goalpost of the, of the field and you see that boundary structure that David mentioned. As you move down through the park, getting further away from Gloucester Street, section B on the bottom of the screen. Again, there's the double tree line. There's landscaping against the boundary structure. But in between is this sort of elevated mound where you can run, sit, relax, just, just enjoy being out in the park. You move to the middle of the park, section C, there's a pavilion. That pavilion has some of the same sort of structural elements as the gateway. So they all sort of tie together. But it'll create shade underneath the pavilion is this seating plinth. Sort of wooden structure that you can sit on both sides, either look into the field or look out toward Hazelwood Avenue. And then the section on the bottom is closer toward the entrance to the field. So you see that second gateway structure. And as, as the park moves from Gloucester Street towards, towards Lidle Street, it gets, it gets narrower as it continues along. So just some sort of character pictures. On the left are those stone block benches, something similar to what we put into the park and a, and a sort of native landscape character. It's not going to be this highly refined garden. It's going to look rugged. It's going to look like part of the mill. The picture in the center is that wooden plinth structure. You can sit on both sides. Won't be exactly like this, but, but very similar to this. And then on the right is a picture of what it's going to feel like to be inside some of these spaces. You know, they're, they're a little bit smaller. They're, they're more intimate. We can raise the elevation. We can, we can raise and create some mounds and add, add some shade as well. So this is an aerial view. If you're flying over Hazelwood Avenue on the right and Gloucester Street would be to the bottom left of the page. So you see the field in the upper left-hand corner and you see these series of spaces. There's the gathering paved space close to Gloucester, separated by grass. Sort of dead center of the park is the pavilion, then another space that's grass and then a larger paved area to get into the stadium. This is a view if you're standing right at the entrance, like sort of at, at Lidle and Hazelwood. The gate to the right is the entrance into the field. In the distance, you see that, that gateway structure. That's, that's the, the sort of link between this side of the park and the Gloucester Street side of the park. And then if you're standing at Gloucester Street, looking into the, into the park, you see the large sort of seating area to the left with the stone block benches and then that gateway structure here. So regardless of which side of the park you come to, you have that gateway structure that ties you from one side to the other. And just the, the basic palette of plants that we're talking about, things that are native to Pennsylvania, things that look natural, things that, things that feel a little softer and they'll be mixed throughout the park. And I will turn it back to David to talk a little bit more about the procedural aspects of the project.
Thank you, Joe. So this is a summary of the urban open space. You can see that the block that Joe was just talking about is block 56. It's part of a urban open space that connects Gloucester all the way down to the river. The point we'll make here is that we're developing parcel 56 with, I believe it's 60, the one right next to it. The other green spaces, as you move down towards the river, will be developed, designed as those other parcels are developed. So the design of those spaces will go along with the design of the projects that ultimately occupy those parcels. Couple of other things. Talk a little bit about sustainability, if we can get the slide to advance here. There we go. So we're going to contribute to an overall LEED/ND Platinum rating for the Hazelwood Green site. We have a lot of opportunities to develop the project with some sustainable design strategies, including our access to transportation, stormwater management, will reduce water to the extent we can and improve the energy performance. And then as we kind of move towards the end here. Did we skip a slide? So accessibility is also a big part of why we do what we do. We want to make sure that everybody has the opportunity to make use of this. And so we will ensure that there are cross slopes and ramps. And to the extent we can implement universal design, that we will make sure that people are accommodated here on this site. Pathways from parking and all circulation will comply. There's another slide there.
Or not.
Well, the other slide would show that we've, there it is. Talking about just kind of the pathways for construction. So construction access will be down Old Second Avenue and Gloucester Street. There will not be construction access down Second Avenue or through the neighborhoods adjacent to the site. So in from the north on Second Avenue and out down there on Blair Street. And there's some other phasing and staging information there as well. I think that's my cue to turn it back over to Austin.
Well, that's, that's the end of the presentation, so I look forward to your questions.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Very thorough presentation. At this time, we open the floor for public testimony. Is there anyone in the room that would like to give testimony based on this application or online? And if there is, please raise your hand and we will admit you in. You want to speak? Please, if you don't mind just coming up here to the podium, that way everybody online and in the room can hear you. Please state your name, address, and, and you've got about three minutes, please, and thank you.
My name's Eric Day. E R I C D A Y. I'm resident of Hazelwood. I've participated in planning-related activities there for about a decade. Here today, urge the commission not to let this continue as it is. I think this would benefit by continuance in an additional dam meeting. The dam on June 24th had about a fifth of the regular people we had. It was not combined with the Hazelwood Initiative regular meeting and was announced with the absolute minimum of notice. At this dam, there are some substantial changes that were revealed, most of it made into the dam report that you have. I can attest that many of my neighbors are not aware of these changes. First, the exit of the Steelers charities as the operator of the site, along with removal of their name from the working title. My community may no longer have an organization to hold accountable or influence to follow through with providing community access and programming. The Steelers at the dam stated they're planning on the minimum being only youth football and girls' flag football, not the expansive list of activities my community expects from their outreach events in 2024. There are about 12 more sports, lots of other facilities on site. Second, the proposed artificial turf is not in compliance with the PLDP. Just going to section 1.2, we're going to hate healthy, safe physical environments and also avoid creating new environmental impacts that future generations must absorb. I believe the microplastics and PFons from the field qualify in that. From section 4.3.1, we have the red list that shall be considered to avoid introducing toxins to the site. And from 1.6, this isn't one of the optional or aspirational parts of the PLDP. This is something that the developer must do. I work in material science research. And my job in doing a lot of biocompatibility of different things in the health of people. It's terrifying to have 30 tons of plastic introduced into environment, not knowing anything else about it. Big concern, I think we really need to know what this field is and what they're going to do about the pollutants that are come off of it. Third, we need to do some clarification about who the users of the field are going to be. So a year ago was the amendment for the type E development. During that, Cayman was very clear that the scope was the surrounding community and the city. But in this, we have it very explicit that this is becoming a major regional destination, which also doesn't fit with the PLDP in the scope of Hazelwood Green. I think this might explain some of the excessive parking that we have planned. Doing the math from what they had, it looks like there's almost enough single-vehicle occupancy spots to fill all of the bleachers. I don't have the time to list all the PLDP things about mobility, parking, infrastructure, heat island effects. But everything in the PLDP points exactly away from this kind of parking plan. And just very shocked to see it here when everything's trying to exactly not do this. I'm not an MB. I believe with time and effort that this plan can work in the PLDP. I think it can be good for Hazelwood Green. It can be good for the community. I think it needs to do both. I appreciated the park that we had earlier today. I think a lot of aspects of that actually fit the Hazelwood Green PLDP a lot better than this does. And kind of in like a minstrel exercise with the community, we believe that like, a lot of this should be safer, better, and offer more access than a typical like brass football field park that the city has. And if not, something closer that I think would be a good option for this.
We're coming up on yours. We're past the three.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Please wrap up. That's okay.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Day, for your testimony and for making it here today. Again, I know that it's been a bit of a long wait. Are there additional testimony? Either in the room or online?
That's me. We do not have any hands raised online.
All right, fantastic. Okay, so I'm going to probably ask commissioners, are there any questions from the, or comments from Commissioner? Commissioner Wu?
Yeah, I have a few questions. So I was, I was reading the correspondence letters of support from Hazelwood Initiative and the, is it the Church of Light? And yeah, they were generally positive. The Hazelwood Initiative did have the question about the parking. And I, I kind of had those questions as well. How much of that parking that you showed is temporary? Is that anticipated to, you know, remain that way? Or, you know, what, what's, what are the plans for that?
Well, so there's really, I put all the parking to support the facility in three categories. Existing campus facilities, existing facilities on the parcel and new off-parcel facilities. And this, this project really counts on all three in its current, you know, as currently imagined. There are two lots at the site today that are asphalt that serve the campus at large. One is a half mile from this and, and it's a little too far for this kind of use. The other will feed this property on, on major, major games and major events. Then there's the existing asphalt that's on the parcel around the garage. That's an existing condition to remain to support the facility day to day. You know, if there's a Saturday morning kids camp and 20 kids show up with their families, you got 20 cars, plus the staff and the coaches and things like that. But it doesn't support major events. And there aren't enough campus facilities today to support the totality of major event demand. That's what the gravel lot is meant to satisfy. Over time, as the site develops and more shared campus facilities are installed around the mill district, that gravel can be replaced. They can use those lots on game days and weekends and things and buildings will fill in. I hope, I hope that answers your question, but that's the basic plan over time for how the, the needs are met. And again, as that's a temporary condition, you know, we didn't want to use asphalt, right? You want to maintain a porous condition, you know, with materials that, you know, work for that environment.
And how many parking spots are there in, in that?
That gravel lot is 650 spaces, roughly, rough justice.
So you said there's about 3,000 seats in the bleachers?
Right, three to one is an approximate ratio. So you got 100 on parcel for buses for game days and kids camps and coaches and clinicians and, you know, minor use like that, facilities use. And 1,000 spaces between campus and gravel lot to support 3,000 seats.
Yeah. And, and we saw with parcel, I guess that was 56, where there is the landscaping.
Yeah, the park there.
Along, yeah, the, the side of the stadium. What's the, where are the plans for the landscaping along Hazelwood Avenue when it comes to the, the parking lot? Is it going to be a similar type of situation as the, you know, the structures along the stadium? Or is it, you know, is it going to be trees?
I think that needs to be a swell to support the partial runoff from that lot. So it'll be a landscaped swell similar to Tecumseh Street. There's a number of these around the campus on Beehive Street, on Blair, on Tecumseh. You know, that's a landscaped BNP, I think is the term of art.
Okay.
But, you know, we learned the hard way that you really need to plant a park in conjunction with the development. So putting in a permanent park there would, would, I think, be all informed.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioners online, is there, are there any questions or comments online before I get started? No? All right. So I wanted to cover a few things. One, Mr. Day, thank you for coming in and giving your testimony. And I want you to know that there's acknowledgement definitely of your concerns. I do believe, and confirm this for me, Mr. Concealer, there had been some development activities, meetings around this. And I'll probably need you, you know, here for a moment, because we'll go back and forth for a moment on this. There was a dam meeting in a series of 18 months, correct me if I'm wrong, in community engagement around this end project, correct?
Right, so there is a separate devolved activities meeting that occurred as a part of the type E amendments that occurred, that were approved last year. Around this time, I'd have to look at the exact timeline of the date of that devolved activities meeting. But that, that devolved activities meeting mainly was around those amendments to allow this type of facility.
Okay.
So I, I want to say it was a little bit, this project was a little bit more conceptual at that time when that devolved activities meeting occurred. And then there was the separate one that occurred this June that allowed for, prior to this hearing.
And if there was a dam meeting, then there was information sent to the RCO, which would be Hazelwood Initiative, correct?
Right.
And that would be out for review for all of those that engaged over the 18 months, residents, business owners, the like, as it relates to this project, correct?
Right, so the devolved activities meeting was held by the Hazelwood Initiative RCO.
Very good. And I just want to confirm, you know, just because I want to have some clarity. Mr. Day, I know that you're representing that there are neighbors that aren't in the room and may not have, have gotten the finer details. But I just want to understand the, the period of time. I do think that there is considerable opportunity to really engage around things like materials. I don't think that it, it is necessarily over to, to continue having dialogue and discussion. So I just want to make that clear. And then I want to confirm that with the team that is presenting here today, that there continue to be some engagement around that. So that while this is supposed to be a, an enhancement to the community, that people aren't necessarily feeling that there are detrimental impacts as it relates. And I think that that could be fair and reasonable. I wanted to clarify a few things. Since the last time you were here, those entry covered spaces, the gateway structures, those are new, right? Or, or maybe you presented it last time. So I know that last time there was a question from one of the commissioners, sorry, Paul, you're good. I know that one of the comments from commission had been you've got 3,000 seats and not necessarily coverage for humans in the event of rain or different weather conditions. These particular gateway structures and spaces, we know they're not going to hold 3,000 people. But have we thought through coverage and opportunity for that? If there's lightning, you know, where do people go? You know, they're, they're in an open space, open field. You know, that was something to think about and have in terms of consideration. And maybe it is, you know, these sort of floating kite canopies that you might put, you know, we've got, this is a hot week. Surprised and happy to see everybody in the room, but we need to keep folks cool when, when we've got seasons such as this, right? So I want to make that comment. And make sure that as we're continually meeting with community, that we're, you know, mindful that some things may be a little bit nimble. And that we, we may need to define those a little differently. I think that that's pretty much, aside from the tree canopy, that reducing hotspot and you continuing to sort of work through. I like the parklet and I'll do that as quickly as I can because I know everybody's waiting. And since I did that quickly, do we have a motion or any further discussion from commission?
I did have one other question, now that you brought it up, about the shade. The, the areas under the bleachers, are those, is that area open to, to people to, you know?
Run for cover?
Yeah, sure. Or is it, you know, is it for storage or something that's closed off to the public?
Yeah, it would be possible for people to occupy the space under those bleachers, not necessarily as an occupancy. But it would be open from the, the rear so that people could get under there if they really needed to.
All right, commissioners, online, in person, do we have a motion from the floor?
Motion approved with the conditions that were read.
Stated in our reports, fantastic. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, Commissioner Blackwell.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Burton Falk? Aye. Commissioner Dick?
No, because of my concerns about the use of artificial turf on the field.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Gammie.
Aye.
I'm okay with the lights, it's cool. Commissioner Gammie?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Maza?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Neill is recused. And Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries, continue to have community dialogue. Thank you so much for everybody coming in. Have a great rest of your day. Thank you. All right, moving on to the next agenda item, and it'll just get cooler in here, but I think we'll be fine. The next agenda item is item number six. And that is as follows. This is Council Bill 2025-1417 at 2819 Shadland Avenue. This is a zoning map amendment for the former Horace Mann School site in the Marshall-Shadland neighborhood. I am going to turn this over to Vice Chair O'Neill as I will recuse from this matter. I'll see you shortly.
And speaking on this matter is Mr. Fraker. First, speaking.
Good afternoon again, commissioners. I believe we have our applicant team here in person, so I'm going to read in the report and then turn it over to them for a presentation. This is Council Bill 2025-1417 filed by Councilman Daniel Lovell. For the commission's report and recommendation, the legislation proposes a zoning map amendment to change the zoning district on parcels 45A166 and 45E43 from residential, single-unit detached, high-density to urban-center mixed-use. Per section 922.05.b2, an application to amend the boundaries of the zoning map may be proposed by the city council, the planning commission, the owner of the subject property, or the owner's agent. The parcels in question are roughly three acres in total, significantly larger than the residential and commercial properties surrounding the site. The site includes the former Horace Mann Elementary School, which closed permanently in 2005, 2006. The building has remained vacant since that time. In addition to the building, the site includes a play area and ball field. The site is generally flat along Shadland Avenue and Antsy Way, but slopes significantly, significantly along Mullen Street and Casement Street. The subject property, properties are surrounded by the R1DH district to the north, the south, and west, and by the local neighborhood commercial district to the east. The neighborhood is characterized by primarily single-family detached homes. Historically, there have been some commercial uses along Shadland Avenue, but some of those uses are no longer operating. There are also several vacant parcels in the immediate area. City planning staff have identified a potential concern that the proposed urban-center mixed-use zoning may be considered a spot zoning. This concern has been raised with the councilmen. Staff have suggested that the applicant look to the local neighborhood commercial or residential mixed-use districts as alternatives and to outline those alternatives. and to outline those alternatives in their presentation materials at this hearing. City planning staff have noted that the local neighborhood commercial district may be a more contextual district. And if the housing needs assessment amendments are passed by city council, there would be an option for a height bonus to allow for a larger development with inclusionary zoning units included, and therefore could be a viable alternative to the UCMU zoning. It should be noted, however, that the residential compatibility standards would apply if the site were rezoned to local neighborhood commercial, but they would not apply under the UCMU district. Another alternative to the UCMU district could be the residential mixed use district. Please see the report for a list of major differences between the UCMU and RMU districts as it may pertain to the proposed, proposal outlined in the briefing presentation from July 15. The applicant has preliminarily, preliminarily suggested proposed affordable and workforce housing and adaptive reuse of the existing school building. Both of these could potentially qualify the applicant for performance points under the UCMU and RMU zoning. Those points are noted in the report. In addition to the zone change, the applicant proposes to amend the zoning map to allow for a maximum height with bonuses of 65 feet and a base height of 50 feet. Because this height map amendment was not introduced as part of the original legislation, it will be added as a condition of the recommendation to city council. Planning staff will be recommending a 45-foot maximum base height in lieu of the proposed 50-foot maximum base height to align it with the surrounding local neighborhood commercial district limits. In 2022, the City of Pittsburgh commissioned a housing needs assessment. The assessment outlined barriers to multi-unit housing development, noting that multi-unit residential development is restricted to just 23% of the city's total land area and that much of that lies in mixed use districts. The assessment recommends zoning reforms to allow for more multi-unit residential development. A development activities meeting was held with the Marshall-Shadland Community Group on July 1, 2025. The DAM report is attached to your materials. The Marshall-Shadland Community Group has agreed to waive the 30-day requirement between the DAM and the hearing for this project. A copy of that waiver is also attached. Per code sections 922.01.c.1 and 922.01.c.2, property owners within 150 feet of the proposed zone change were notified of the proposal and posted notice was placed on the site 21 days in advance of this hearing. With that, the recommended motion is that the city, that, is that the planning commission of the City of Pittsburgh makes a positive recommendation on Council Bill 2025-1417 for a zoning map amendment to change from a single unit residential high density to urban center mixed use parcels 45A-166 and 45E-43 in the Marshall-Shadland neighborhood with the condition that the maximum and minimum, and minimum height map be overlaid on the subject parcels with a base height of 45 feet and a maximum height of 65 feet with performance points. With that, I'll turn it over to the applicant team.
Thank you, commissioners. I do know they have the video, but you all saw it two weeks ago and nothing has changed since then. So I think we can spare you having to watch the video again. For me, I'll say it's actually exciting for me to be here. They've been working on this longer than I have, but I got engaged about two years ago when at one point there was a conversation about doing a 100% affordable housing deal in this area. And the community actually pushed back. And they said, we have affordable housing being built in and around us with allegheny dwellings and things of that nature. We actually do need some levels of affordability, but we also need what we're, what they consider workforce housing as well. And so working with them, they were willing to sort of go back to the table and say, through a series of meetings, what can we really deliver that the community is actually asking for? And part of that was the senior housing, because as of right now, there's nowhere for those who have grown up there to stay if they have to move out of their single family home. The workforce housing component of it, as well as which is actually was even more exciting for most than the housing, was the workforce component and their ability to partner with Partner for Work to come in and actually run a workforce training site inside of here as well. So it took a while to get to where we are today. But for all those reasons and putting together the various uses of the site is how we ended up looking at the various zoning and what would allow for what the community really was looking for. And that's how we ended up with this particular zoning change. And that the community has been supportive of, as noted by the presenter. They even waived the 30-day requirement to say, we want to see this move forward. Those who, living in and around it who have received the notification are excited because we're going to be breathing life into an area of our city that hasn't seen investment in 20 years since the school closed. So hopefully looking forward to your favorable recommendation. More than willing to answer any questions. We did get the notice about the potential for spot zoning. We don't believe this is that. We talked a little bit about that last time, two weeks ago as well. But we believe for a number of reasons, this doesn't qualify. We certainly don't believe it'll be flagged or, or be challenged in any way. So more than willing to answer any questions you have.
Great. Do you have any additional presentation or speakers today?
Just very, very briefly, because I know we went over this and it's been quite a long day for you commissioners. But we, we really believe in this project. And we believe that workforce housing and the senior housing, along with the workforce development center, is not going to be just a benefit for the North Side, but for the City of Pittsburgh as a whole. When we look at the workforce housing component, we're talking about 112 units. These are men and women who are working in the community now at, you know, AHN or down at Rivers Casino, who don't have the ability to live close by where they work because it's just not affordable. So this is a very viable option for, for those men and women. For seniors, as previously stated, this is an opportunity for them to be able to stay in their communities. And then you have the, the conversion of the old Horseman School, the 57,000 square foot school into a workforce development center where men and women can be retrained to meet the challenges that we face in Pittsburgh, whether it's the US Steel Nippon merger or whatever, the conversions going on in the healthcare system. But we really believe that this is going to be a transformative project that's not only going to really build up the North Side, but be very, very supportive for the whole Pittsburgh region. As you can see, the building on the left on Antsy Way is the workforce, 112 units for the workforce housing. The smaller building in green, that is the seniors' building. The building in silver, that is the conversion of the Horseman School into the workforce development center. And the building on the left, south corner, that is the parking facility. Everyone's pretty familiar with the location. I, I will say too, that it is very important, as the councilman mentioned, this is not just affordable housing. It is going to be a mix of affordable housing, market rate housing. The reason being is that that whole concept that it takes a village to raise a child, it's just good for, for, for young people and people from all aspects of life to see. Men and women in suit and ties going to work, or men and women in their scrubs going to work, or men and women going down to Rivers Casino go to work. And, and we just think that this whole village concept is something that's going to be very, very positive. So it's not, so the units, whether you are in a workforce housing unit or you're in a market rate unit, the units are the same. I will say too, that one of the reasons that we are at 182 units is that was the bare minimum to try to make this work. This is a very, very complex deal. Traditional light tech deals just couldn't provide us the options that we need. We're going to use a new concept here in Pittsburgh, which are 501(c)(3) bonds, accompanied with some opportunity zone funds, and we receive state funding as well. So this is a very complex deal. And to get to 182 units was the only way we could sort of make it viable economically. And that's pretty much it for me. If there's any questions, I'd love to answer them, or councilman.
Thank you. And for the record, could you please state your name?
I'm sorry. My name is Mark Lay. I'm a partner at Black River Real Estate Development, along with my co-partner, Jermaine Younger, who's in the audience as well.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we take public testimony. Is there anyone in the room who'd like to speak on this application? Seeing none, do we have, oh, go right ahead. Yes, and since we actually have some people speaking today, I'll go over the rules. Every speaker has three minutes regarding the application that's before us. Please state your name and spell your name for the court reporter. And I will, I mean, go right ahead.
Yeah, my name's Christopher Old. I own five houses and six vacant parcels along Shadland Avenue. The only, I wasn't planning on speaking, but you guys brought up spot zoning. In the future, I plan on developing my own parcels and would also be seeking a similar zoning variation. So I'm in full support of this development. I was one of the last graduating classes of Horseman Elementary. I've watched that building deteriorate over years, and this is long overdue. And I'm excited to see the money going into the community. And I'm hoping that these gentlemen will pave the way for me to follow in their footsteps. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your testimony. It doesn't look like we have any hands raised.
We do have a hand raised.
Oh, I can't see. Okay, got it.
Yep, no problem. Let's see. Angel Gober, you can unmute. You have three minutes for your statement. Please state and spell your name for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Angel Gober, A-N-G-E-L.
Ms. Gober, could you please speak up a little bit? You're just a little quiet.
Let me turn my volume up.
We cannot currently hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Do you need me to, you said, spell my name and what else?
I do, but now that I said I could hear you, you got quiet again.
Can you hear me now? No, very poorly. Can hear you very poorly. Okay, I'm going to try and switch my device. If you would just give me one second, please.
Sure.
I can put the phone number so you can call in as well, if that's useful. Give me one second. I will drop that in the chat.
Hello, can you hear me now?
That's better.
Yes.
Oh, good. Victory. Good, good afternoon. My name is Angel Gober, and I am here representing the Marshall-Shadland Civic Group. We are a community-based organization and the registered community organization for the Marshall-Shadland neighborhood on the North Side. Our organization is committed to improving the quality of life in our community through affordable housing, beautifying vacant lots, and supporting minority-owned businesses. I'm here today to express strong support for the Horseman School Village Project. This development is long overdue, as somebody previously said. The vacant Horseman School building has become an eyesore and a symbol of disinvestment in our neighborhood. Its empty presence has discouraged community morale, and residents have continuously asked when something will be done. So we believe that this project answers that call. And we are thrilled that a black-owned development company is leading this initiative with thoughtfulness, care, and real commitment to the needs of the community. The plan to create mixed-use affordable housing addresses a critical need as homelessness increases and both families and seniors struggle to find safe, stable housing. This project not only revitalizes a blighted property, but offers hope and real solutions. It's an opportunity to solve two problems, beautifying our community and providing much-needed housing for residents who need extra support. We urge you to support the necessary changes that will allow the Horseman Village Project to move forward. And thank you for your time and your consideration. Hopefully everyone heard me.
Yes, we did. Thank you for your testimony. Are there any other hands raised?
There are no other hands raised.
Great. So we will kick it over to Commissioner Comments. I did want to ask a quick question to the applicants before we move forward. The Department of City Planning is proposing a condition of approval that the height be a minimum of 45 feet? Is that something that? Yeah, could you please, it's not in front of me, so if we could just clarify what the proposed condition, and I'm sorry, not condition of approval, condition of recommendation or caveat?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Neill, yes. So the condition isn't for a minimum of 45 feet. It's a base height. So in the UC districts, similar to the RIV and some of the other districts, there's a base height and then there's a maximum height that can be achieved through bonus points. We did a quick evaluation on the proposed scope of work for this project and found that there would be ample number of points to achieve the proposed height. And the reason we wanted to modify that to 45 is just because it's consistent with the surrounding LNC district and consistent with other UC-type districts and RIV-type districts as a base height.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you. And just for the record, there are no concerns from the applicant with that?
The senior building, we have a max height of 61 feet. And the workforce housing, we had about 50 feet.
Okay. And so with the proposed bonus points per the administrator, it wouldn't be a concern?
Exactly.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any comments from the commission? Commissioner Wu?
Yeah, I wanted to kind of echo what other folks have said. This, this redevelopment, you know, is very exciting. I, I think what you, what you guys are doing with the, you know, mixing the workforce age folks with the seniors is, is great. You know, seniors always like to be around younger folks. They don't want to be in a senior, you know, facility by themselves. So it's great that there's a mix of ages, a mix of, you know, affordable housing and workforce housing. And, you know, a building that's been vacant since 2005. We, we got correspondence from a local resident that said he'd be happy with anything in there. You know, he, he just wants it to not be vacant. So it's new housing in an area where, you know, there's, there's a lot of vacancy. I think that 3D model that you showed, you know, you could see all the vacant parcels, you know, nearby there. So, and, you know, Pittsburgh is one of the only metro areas where it's actually cheaper to buy a home than it is to rent. And, you know, and that, that's because there's not enough rental housing being developed here. So any, any new rental housing, you know, for, for folks who work at AHN or Rivers Casino or, you know, are in the workforce, you know, is badly needed. So I, I think, yeah, I, I. So I think, yeah, I definitely support sending this to council for approval.
Thank you. Are there any other commissioner comments?
I don't have a comment, but I'd make a motion for recommendation if...
Just one moment? Yeah, I...sorry, I have comments. I just wanted to let everybody go.
Nope, go right ahead.
Okay, great, thank you. So thank you for the presentation, and just to clarify for the record, it is helpful to understand what is being proposed before us. Today is only the rezoning. We're not approving or recommending approval of a specific project, though it is very helpful to understand. And just for the record, in terms of spot zoning, you know, there is a test. First, we look at if it's being...if a property is being treated differently than the surrounding properties, and if so, whether that's justified based on the characteristics of the neighborhood and the characteristics of the property. If there is sufficient justification, it is not spot zoning. So I think here on the record, we do have sufficient evidence. One, it's a property that has been vacant for a time, needs rezoning because it needs to be put to productive use, large parcels compared to the smaller parcels around certainly a unique structure and kind of layout as compared to the smaller lots that are in the residential areas nearby. As far as the LNC that's nearby, it's a little bit different than a lot of our other LNCs in the city. It's not quite as consistent of a business district. It really is more of a mixed-use, and frankly, a little bit more residential. So I think that the concerns over spot zoning, while we're happy they were raised, I don't think that that's a concern here, and I don't have any issue with recommending approval. I will go on the record and say, we did receive the presentation today, so I didn't have time to go over all of it. But because we're talking about the rezoning and not the specific project, I think that we're okay to move forward. So with that, I will kick it back to Commissioner Gammey.
I'll make a recommendation, a motion to approve?
Okay, so we have a motion, and a motion to approve from Commissioner Gammey and a second from Commissioner Blackwell, subject to the conditions in our report. I will...just one second. I will take a roll call vote. Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton Falk has abstained or recused. Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Commissioner Maza? Commissioner Gammey?
Aye.
Commissioner Cantonea? Commissioner Ruiz? And I guess myself, Commissioner O'Neil? Aye. Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Planning Commission has voted to recommend approval, subject to the caveat that we discussed on the record. And for anybody who is watching, this will be discussed again at City Council. So thank you all for your presentation and for hanging in there.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, we can get Commissioner Burton Falk back here, but I don't want to hold anybody up, so we will read the next item into the record. So our final item tonight in the hearing and action portion is the outdoor retail sales and service legislation. This is a zoning code text amendment regarding outdoor retail sales and service uses that would affect the city as a whole. Speaking on behalf...I'm sorry, presenting the initial presentation is Mr. Dash and Ms. Hill.
Thank you, commissioners. So as noted, we are here relative to the larger topic of vending and vending as, you know, kind of opportunity for greater vitality, greater economic mobility, you know, here in the city. You know, part of that is around, you know, some changes to the zoning code, specifically to the outdoor retail sales and service use within the zoning code. And so really, given time, we're going to kind of move quickly through, you know, through why we're doing this, you know, what our current program around vending is, which I'm going to turn over to Monica Bender, who's, you know, our assistant director and handles vending for permits, licenses, inspections. We're going to talk through a lot of the work that we've done to get here, you know, engagements, a larger white paper, recommendations, and how that then relates to the specific text amendment. But ultimately, we see this text amendment as something that needs to be done to achieve our broader goals around vending, which, like I said, are really to, you know, to lower the barrier, you know, for economic opportunity, you know, for people who are looking to start businesses in our city, to create, you know, like I said, greater vitality, you know, in our streets and neighborhood business districts, while also making sure that we're putting in the right protections to, you know, our, you know, existing brick-and-mortar businesses and other uses that are going on in, you know, in the city. And so we'll close out and then, you know, kind of go through timeline and, you know, the relationship of this work to other initiatives. So with that, I will, you know, like I said, you know, kind of covering the high points of why we're doing this work, and then turn it over to Monica, who'll talk through the current program.
Thank you, Andrew. Again, my name is Monica Bender. I work for the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections. I currently serve as the Assistant Director of Licensing and Administration and the Licensing Officer for the City of Pittsburgh for licenses, specific licenses. And so as Andrew mentioned, we are looking to change what exists in the current licensing and zoning code to support this program change. And we, in that process, we evaluated some other peer...some peer cities in relation to this activity, and we identified a few challenges. And those challenges included small volume of allowed vending locations. And that's just...there's the...or the licensing...the licensing has been fairly antiquated. We haven't made updates in probably about two and a half decades, a major update. So we're looking at trying to make those changes and expand locations within the city. A lot of that is also due to an existing difficult process in adding stationary locations, and that's because of the steps that are necessary to add those locations. Being a committee that must vote, has to go through legislation, and then add it to city code. We also have complex and confusing regulations. So as I mentioned, the code hasn't had a major overhaul for about two and a half decades, and so we need to make adjustments to meet the needs of the current state of the city and the infrastructure that we live in. Unsustainable fee structure, we need to ensure that the fees that we're taking in can support the administration of that program. And so need to look at whether the costs can be recouped through application fees and therefore ensuring that we can be out in the field or out in the city, bringing folks into compliance or ensuring that those who have licenses see our services paid forward. And then lastly, just already touched upon that, but ensuring that there's compliance assistance. So, you know, we have license holders that are good actors. They come in, they apply for licenses, and we want to make sure that we have a presence out there and that we're meeting that service...that service promise that folks are seeing us and working with others...working with other individuals who maybe aren't familiar with our program and bringing them into compliance as license holders within the City of Pittsburgh. And so the current program is actually Title VII, Chapter 719. This is vendors and peddlers. And we're actually speaking specifically to the mobile and stationary vending licenses. And these licenses are...refer to activity in the right-of-way or the street and sidewalk. Mobile licenses are used mostly within the metered parking spaces, and they are required to move at least once every four hours. Stationary vendors use a specific predetermined or pre-approved licensed location, as I mentioned in the previous slide, through our approval committee. And they are located on the street and sidewalk, and they are not required to move. And then we have the zoning code changes, which we'll talk more about. But this permits the activity on private property as two different use types. So as the main use on a lot through the outdoor retail sales and services as non-accessory use, and then as an accessory use. And I'm going to hand it over to Melissa.
Hi, Melissa Hill with City Planning. I'm going to quickly walk through some of the steps that we've taken over the past seven months to develop these recommendations and quickly overview what will be presented in two pieces of legislation. Of course, the one that is relevant today is the zoning text amendment. We've met with a number of peer cities. We've conducted two rounds of engagements, so a total of four focus groups that talked about the various, you know, needs around vending policy for our stakeholders. I had a number of one-on-one discussions with our nonprofit partners, as well as internally with the city, and then also built off of the work that Domey did during the pandemic to develop the new outdoor dining and retail license. So as I mentioned, we are developing two pieces of legislation, one which will amend Chapter 719, which currently governs the vendors and peddlers licenses. Those amendments will include creating one entry point to the permitting process. So instead of having different licenses for mobile versus stationary vendors, having that single license, and then permitting specific locations, switching from what is now a nomination process for individual sites to established criteria in the right-of-way, with some exceptions in some areas of town where we do need to take a more site-by-site approach, updating some of our rules and regulations just to be more on track with contemporary policy and best practices, changing how we define a mobile and stationary vendor, and creating a process to allocate a block or an area within the right-of-way to multiple vendors being able to use the site.
Clicker is not clicking.
So today, we have a text amendment before us that will amend the zoning code to expand permissions for vending activity, or what in the zoning code is referred to as outdoor retail sales and services. A large subset of outdoor retail sales and services would be vending, expanding these permissions on private property and aligning that regulation with the vending licensing chapter, which will also enable us to expand the adopt-a-lot program where appropriate for use of city-owned property for vending. This will amend three chapters, Chapter 911, Chapter 912, and Chapter 922. So in Chapter 911, this will include an update to both the use table and the use standards. First, replacing what is currently a non-accessory outdoor retail sales and service use with a new primary use, to clarify the language that we're using. Removing what is a requirement now to locate at least 100 feet from a competitive business on private property. This requirement would remain in place for the use of the right-of-way with a couple of exceptions potentially. And then replacing language on health, fire, and other approvals, just to comply with the vending license, so that when that license requirement is updated, so are the provisions that need to be followed on private property. Currently, this use is allowed by right as a primary or non-accessory use only in UCMU and UCE districts, so some of our newly created districts. We are proposing is that outdoor retail sales and service as a primary use is permitted in all mixed-use districts, Special P and NEMI, and Golden Triangle, and most RIV districts. This visualizes what that change looks like for, again, if vending is the primary use on a lot. So as you can see currently, this is allowed only in very, very small pockets of the city. However, much of our vending activity does occur as an accessory use, and so we are proposing to update Chapter 912 to allow non...to allow in non-residential zoning districts the use by right as an accessory use, and to allow this in residential districts by right, one accessory to some non-residential uses, so agriculture, community centers, parks and recreation, religious assembly, and schools. Similarly to in Chapter 912, we're proposing to update the accessory use standards for outdoor retail sales and services, again, to just modernize kind of how we're thinking about this use, remove language requiring this to be integral to the primary use in pursuant to the same business identification number as the primary use on a lot, updating those compliance requirements to align with just obtaining a vending license. Thanks for the patience with the slides.
No worries. It has a mind of its own, and must be batteries, I'm willing to bet.
The third chapter included in the text amendment is 922, which goes into the approval processes. And this is really to provide cases where we would not need to do a full zoning review, just to make this easier and to make sure that we're not doing a full zoning review every time there's one event and there's no kind of permanent changes to a site. And we can get into those in the questions and answers if needed, but I'll go ahead and move on for now. And finally, in addition to these policy changes, we have, you know, worked with stakeholders and found ideas from other cities on how we can support vendors beyond just updating these permissions. I'll pass it back off to Andrew.
And so again, in summary, really the intention here is to have the, you know, the vending, the changes to 719 be the front door to a lot of the way that new vendors would be operating with us at the city, you know, and that the zoning regulations are really there to supplement that. And so, you know, and the vending and the zoning, you know, really are going to be much more kind of intricately tied together under the revisions that we're making to this plan. So hopefully, we think that that will make it easier, as well as open up opportunity while making sure that we're continuing to maintain the protections that we need to maintain, you know, for any secondary effects. And so, you know, just as a timeline, we presented this the last time. Obviously, we're here at briefing and hearing in action to the Planning Commission and obviously hoping for a positive recommendation to the zoning code amendments, so that after City Council's recess, which takes place in August, we can introduce changes to both the zoning code and the 719 to vending and peddling, so that City Council can hear those both at the same time. We are looking for that to happen through fall of 2025, because we want to put these regulations in place for the beginning of 2026. Really, you know, one piece of that is obviously the NFL Draft coming to Pittsburgh is a large event that will have, you know, kind of an influx potentially of vending opportunities. I would say that at the same time, the changes to this program are not solely around the draft, right? You know, this is something that is around how we look at vending, you know, through our city more permanently, and how we change our recommendations more permanently, really to reflect those things that we've stated through the presentation. You know, so, you know, again, you know, those kind of items I just listed here on the legislative milestone slide. And, you know, we did, as Melissa stated, have a couple of focus groups in the beginning of the month. You know, the things that they had really...we had taken from those two focus groups. We had those two series of focus groups. One was with, you know, vendors or interested vendors. Another one was with neighborhood business districts representatives and brick-and-mortar businesses. So really trying to look at how we create that balance of, you know, of both the things that vendors need to be able to locate the city and existing business districts need to be able to continue to stay successful. This last slide covers...we did hear, obviously, some concerns from the commissioners from briefing around issues of trash collection, accessibility, or public safety. You know, looking through those, again, you know, that all of this really kind of fits into clarifying this program, making this program more simple to both administer and enforce, so that, you know, those questions are things that, you know, that will be controlled by enforcement in the program and also by guidance that we give. You know, as Melissa stated, I mean, really, our intention is not only to be legislative here, but really try to be proactive around providing a conditional guidance and resources to vendors, so that they can both operate here in the city, but operate here in the city with respect to our neighbors and business districts. So with that, thank you, and after testimony, happy to take any questions from the commission.
Thank you so much. Okay, so at this time, we open the floor for public testimony. I've seen you gentlemen hanging out for quite some time. I've seen you gentlemen hanging out for quite some time, so I want to hear what you have to say. Come on up. If you don't mind, just go over to the podium there so I can hear your voice very well. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
So what we'll need is you to state your name, your address, and then share with us your thoughts today.
My name is Howard Todd. I'm a resident of Mount Washington. I also own two businesses, D-Furors Ice Cream Delight and D-Furors Grand Brew. Couple of dreams of mine when I was a young man and came for fruition. We took vacant buildings, brick and mortar, and we made them into something. Very proud of it. Now my grandkids work in there, but it's been a fantastic thing. So good afternoon for one. And I'm a member of the Board of Mount Washington Communities Development Corporation. And I sit on the Business Advisory Committee. I'm not speaking here today on the WCDC. Over the years, mobile vending has been an issue along Grand View Avenue, Virginia Avenue, and connecting streets in the Mount Washington business districts. Mobile vending directly competes with brick-and-mortar businesses and have an unfair advantage over those same brick-and-mortar businesses. Brick-and-mortar businesses have costs of business the mobile vendors do not incur. In fact, some local businesses suffered losses through the COVID-19. We had an incline closure of over two years with the Monique incline. And because of these types of expenses such as rent, utilities, insurance, furthermore, local businesses hire directly improved neighborhood economies. They are not benefits conferred by mobile vendors. They come from everywhere. You don't know where they're coming from. In response to local business concerns about mobile and stationary vending on Mount Washington, Pittsburgh City Council enacted an ordinance in 1995 thereabouts to prevent mobile and stationary vending in these business districts. The relevant code section is 71905A-GNH, which specifically take care of Grand View Avenue. Over the years, mobile vendors and stationary vendors have violated this code section on a regular basis, with or without having research permit requirements and the vending prohibitions on the mount. In almost every case of such violations, local businesses have to contact the city police to enforce the law or a city council person, vice versa down the line. The city actually posted no vending signs on Grand View Avenue in 2022. Since those signs were posted, there is no record of any mobile or stationary vending taking place along Grand View Avenue. It's already chaotic with race cars and everything else. We're having a lot of problems up there. While I am in favor of productive use of public spaces and vacant properly, and vacant private property, I am concerned that changes in the current code or ordinance or related codes will encourage mobile and stationary vendors to buy PAC Section 71905A and unfairly compete with businesses located in Mount Washington business district. Any revision to the codes regarding expanded mobile and stationary vending should not adversely should not adversely affect the businesses in the Mount Washington business districts.
That's three minutes. Please wrap up.
Business districts. And I argue that such expansion should not adversely affect any business district in the city of Pittsburgh. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Todd. Thank you for your testimony and making it here today. And I am, should I assume you'd be coming as well? You'll be giving some testimony as well, correct?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
First of all, thanks for the opportunity. I really appreciate that. I'd like to begin by saying, let's start with one of the most important facts. There are no quantifiable data such as independent surveys, referendum results, et cetera, to show any real demand for street vending. The business districts of our community have more than enough locally owned stores and restaurants to meet all the needs and desires for food, drink, memorabilia, and more. Our local brick-and-mortar businesses pay property taxes, sales taxes, insurance, along with utility and service fees while keeping the sidewalks and streets clear and attractive. On the other hand, opportunistic vendors take revenue from these businesses while not, well, just paying a small permit fee. Street vendors frequently cause sidewalks to become difficult to navigate, reduce parking spaces, and contribute to vehicular congestion and pollution according to and crowding business thoroughfares and slowing traffic. In addition to all of this, city officials and residents complain of pollution from uncontrolled trash and untreated wastewater areas where street vending is concentrated. From a health perspective, there are a number of hazards associated with foods that are prepared and served in open-air environments because they are so susceptible to contamination from air pollution, vehicle exhaust, and other environmental pollutants. What's more, there is no clear labeling of street foods and customers usually have no idea of the number of hidden sugars, fats, and allergens in the product. On top of this, street vendors typically operate with limited access to resources such as clean water, electricity, and sanitation facilities. This makes it challenging for vendors to maintain their equipment and uphold basic hygiene standards, leading to potential health risks for both vendors and consumers. Street vendors can also have a negative impact on the aesthetic appeal of neighborhoods by leading to littering, noise pollution, and overcrowding. It is also worth mentioning at this point that the latest petition signed by over 650 residents definitely proves that our community does not want street vendors. All this evidence clearly shows there is no real need or desire for street vending. Thank you.
Thank you. One question. Did you state your name? Because I usually get it and I didn't hear. Your name?
Sorry.
Name?
I'm sorry. Hi, my name is Nicholas Versick. My address is 918 Grand View Avenue in Mount Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Versick. I do apologize. I wanted to get that on the record, but also I'd like to know who you are. Thank you. Okay, do we have additional? It looks like there's another hand raised online. Is there anyone else in the room?
Online, we have Mel Larick. Mel Larick, you can unmute. You have three minutes for your statement. Please state and spell your name for the record.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me?
We can. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Melissa Larick, M-E-L-I-S-S-A-L-A-R-R-I-C-K. And I am the Executive Director of the Pittsburgh Brewers Guild. We are a nonprofit organization dedicated to operating as a unified voice for our 44 member breweries. They all own and operate breweries right here in Allegheny County. To kind of challenge the point made before me, we do have a very strong need for mobile food vendors. Roughly 75% of those active breweries, our member breweries, do rely on food vendors to offer food options in their taprooms or local makers that contribute to successful special events. So this proposed policy change is of great interest to us as an organization. The Pittsburgh Brewers Guild does speak in support of updating the mobile vending policy in an effort to clarify permit processes and make them efficient and equitable for both stationary and mobile vendors. Although our members' mobile food vendors are typically set up on private property, we are in support of these updates as the landscape of the city has changed drastically since the current policy was written. And furthermore, in allyship with these mobile vendors, because we are so reliant on them, we'd like to reimagine just a better means of operation, more sustainable fee structure, et cetera. The Brewers Guild believes this policy update will allow mobile vendors to create more equitable opportunities for community-focused events like food truck roundups that could utilize public parks and spaces, as well as contributing to the community as a source of crowd control and safety. At this time, late-night food options are rare in Pittsburgh, so a clear and concise way of vending could allow opportunities to expand the city's late-night economy in a safe and equitable way. Finally, oftentimes, mobile food vending is a pathway to brick-and-mortar business ownership. Case in point, Alberta's Pizza, they operate on Western Avenue. They began as a food truck, and not all business owners have the equitable opportunities to just start running to a brick-and-mortar operation. And so they built their platform, built their clients, and from there expanded into a brick-and-mortar business about four years after they created their truck. So all this to say, the Pittsburgh Brewers Guild and its members are proud to contribute to the city's growth and evolution. And our hope is that a refreshed policy will help all ships rise to rise, all ships to rise fairly and efficiently. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa Larick, for your testimony. Have a great rest of your day. We have additional hands raised?
Yes, Matt Buckholz. You can unmute. Please state and spell your name for the record. You have three minutes for your statement.
Hi, can you hear me there?
We can hear you.
Okay. My name is Matt Buckholz, M-A-T-T, and the last name is B-U-C-H-H-O-L-Z. I live and work in Greenfield, where I own a storefront at 517 Greenfield Avenue for my business, Alternate Histories. I started as a small independent vendor and opened this store in 2010 and opened the storefront three years ago, I think. It's hard to keep track. I put on numerous events with food trucks and mobile vendors, as well as other small business owners who don't have a brick-and-mortar space. I think it's really important to do so. I think it's really helpful. And I think that, you know, focusing only on people who come from a neighborhood or live only in that community is counterproductive to growing an area and a business district. And I, you know, to be frank, I think a city that prides itself on being the home of Mr. Rogers, it's simply not neighborly behavior. As the owner of a brick-and-mortar storefront, I think that working with up-and-coming vendors, welcoming them into the business district and, you know, helping set up events and things, I think it pays dividends. It certainly has for me. Events that I do with food trucks and other vendors are a great extra source of income for me during the summer. My events with those vendors and stuff have always done well. As Mel just said, I do believe that a rising tide lifts all boats. And I'm happy to support the changes being proposed today, happy to support anything that makes it easier for independent entrepreneurs to start, independent entrepreneurs to start and succeed in their new business. I had a lot of help from, you know, businesses along the way. And I think it's only right and good that I try to help others and support things like this when I can. So I'm in full support of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt Buckholz. Have a great rest of your day.
You too. Thank you.
Additional?
There are no other hands.
All right. Okay, so Commissioners, at this time, what we have before us is a recommendation. But if there's some dialogue here, Commissioner Wu?
And maybe just before, just if you wouldn't mind, one of the items that was, you know, kind of referenced in testimony was around Grand View Avenue. Just as a point of clarity, you know, we are, like I said, trying to tie Chapter 719 and the requirements for either mobile or stationary vendors to the zoning code in the zoning districts. And with the Grand View Public Realm District, the GPR, which is what's along Grand View Avenue, being something that is not a mixed-use district, we would not be permitting mobile or stationary vendors, you know, along Grand View Avenue. So that, you know, like the, you know, obviously, there were a number of items stated other than that, but just to clarify and get that on the record.
Thank you, Mr. Dash. That, thank you. That actually was going to be a question of mine. And Commissioner Wu, I don't want to sort of jump in front of you, but I, yeah, I wanted to very much so to help ease and maybe get some comfort and arms wrapped around sort of things like restrictions. Will there be sort of a competition clause? Like a vendor couldn't be so many feet within a business that operates and does the exact same. Now, this, you know, definitely gives you a level of comfort, but just wanted to get those kinds of things on the record because, you know, everybody has to be able to do their small business, and we want the city to thrive, and we don't want to, yes. And thank you for that, right? Because it's not easy. And we're grateful for those and that they do still exist. Trust and believe. I run a nonprofit. I know exactly where you are. But I want to make sure that those kinds of things are, have some clarity. And I think that others that might have some questions out there as well. I think that what happens when we get to a place like this, when we're doing a recommendation to council, that the work doesn't stop here. It's kind of in progress, almost like a whip. You know, it's work in progress, meaning it's going to carry on throughout the entire cycle of what is being presented here, which means you get to engage even more over time, right? Great. Fantastic. Well, we love those as well. Commissioner Wu, sorry about that.
Yeah, I just want to, I was going to touch on the Grand View Public Realm districts as well. But Grand View on the south side is GPR, right? And then on the, on the side with the overlook, is that, is that Park?
It's either a Parker Hillside District, you know, which again, you know, like the location would not be one that would permit, you know, that we would be permitting stationary mobile vending along.
Yeah. And I kind of just want to clarify as well that what we're, you know, looking to potentially move to council is about the zoning. So we're not, you know, we don't have purview over, you know, like the public realm, the public rights of way that, you know, other state departments like DOMI would be in charge of.
Maybe to clarify that in Commissioner Burton Falk's comment, you know, as well. I mean, although the spacing, you know, we did discuss removing the spacing in the zoning text, which, you know, kind of fit with the issue that Mel had brought up in her testimony around breweries and, you know, looking at the fact that they might be bringing in food trucks that, you know, are related to the brewery business. For mobile and stationary vendors that are still on the street or in the right-of-way, that spacing would still would apply. And so, and, you know, although it is not in the zoning text amendment, it is in the vending text amendment so that if you were a mobile vendor, you know, and you came onto a space, you would have to be spaced apart from other mobile vendors because we want to both allow mobile vendors but preserve parking in front of, you know, a number of our businesses and not be able to take, you know, we're not here to try to take away blocks of on-street parking. And secondarily, that there are spacing between them and comparable brick-and-mortar businesses. So we do want to, you know, we do want to make sure that we are not, you know, that we're balancing, you know, both trying to allow for more activity and more vendors and more business, but, you know, making sure that we're trying to protect the ones that we have. And, you know, again, respecting their role in, you know, being anchors of our neighborhood business districts.
Yeah, I was speaking more from the perspective of us looking at the planning side of things and not at Article 7.
Yeah. So, yeah, but yes, so we are definitely thinking about that in the whole, although it's not specifically in what's before the commission.
All right. Thank you very much for that clarification. It looks like Commissioner Dick, did you also have a comment? Okay.
Just very quickly, I would like to reiterate my usual stand here that as PLI handles this new, possibly handles this new change, that it is absolutely essential to continue to enforce its responsibility to keep sidewalks, right-of-ways on sidewalks open sufficiently so that people utilizing mobility devices like wheelchairs or using white canes or service dogs have adequate space in which to traverse the sidewalks.
Thank you, Commissioner Dick. Commissioner O'Neill?
I have a kind of more technical question with regards to the language in the code that I didn't look at until right now. So I understand even if a record of zoning approval is not required, these uses, outdoor retail sales and services, primary or accessory use would still be subject to the requirements of the code, which is what it says in Chapter 912. I was just a little bit confused about if there's a primary use on another lot, Rosa would not be required. And I don't know that that actually has any effect if it's still subject to the same rules. I was just wondering what that language was there for, and that's in section, oh, gosh. It's an amendment. Oh, this is really not helping. I, yeah.
You read it?
Yeah, I think so. 92202A1NOWI. Yeah, I think so. 922-02-A1-NOW-I-Romanette-3. Well, and that's the question is, it's subject to the same rules. So I don't know that it makes much of a difference. I was just wondering if there was a purpose for that. So like you said, it does add, like the presentation says, it does add language that the standards are met. And it doesn't change any of the requirements of Allegheny County Health Department or, you know, otherwise. I was just.
That is correct. I mean, I, I think that, you know, if, maybe I'll start, and we have Kate over there as well, who might be able to, you know, I, I think this is relative to the changes to 922. Is that?
Yes, it is. I'm sorry.
And so, you know, the, the, the item here is that there, there may be instances in which people may be getting a vending license, you know, but that, you know, whether it is around tenure or a purpose of, you know, a mobile vendor, that we were clarifying that a, that a ROSA would not be required. You know, so, you know, those are, those are listed, those are listed here. You know, and, and again, you know, kind of the idea being that there are going to be some places where, you know, again, due to tenure on a site or what the, you know, what's actually on the site, you know, that, you know, having them comply with the vending license and with the guidelines, you know, and with the provisions of the zoning code, which would be in the guidelines for, for them as vendors, you know, would be enough and that we wouldn't also necessitate a ROSA. Whereas permanent structure, you know, permanent locations for vending or, you know, or long-term locations for vending would be something that would require a ROSA in, in that instance, if that helps, if that helped clarify.
It does. I don't know that this language is clear, but maybe it's a little bit form over substance because if you're talking about two primary uses on a lot, the existing one would already have a certificate of occupancy because it is a brick and mortar. So, I, yeah. So, you know, it's not going on there against the consent of the existing owner. They own the underlying property. Okay, I, I think maybe we could talk about the language and making sure that that's clarified. Yeah, just to clarify, because I don't know that our court reporter can hear. If there's an existing brick and mortar, a business that would be operating, it would have a certificate of occupancy. And certainly, if it's on the same lot, the property is owned by that original occupant. So, you know, the second primary use or the second vendor, I guess first vendor, you know, everybody.
Yeah, excuse me, I can't hear them.
And I'm sorry, sir. It's just a little hard with the record. Yeah, sorry. Not that we're disagreeing. Understood, understood. I think we're all on the same page.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah, I would just add to the, to both of you that this will go before City Council, and the City Council is where Article 7, where the licensing and the, you know, the, the, the conditions of safety and conditions of, you know, you know, electric use and things like, potentially things like that. I have not looked at the, that section would be addressed. Yeah.
I can't hear what they're saying. I'm sorry.
The court reporter isn't able to hear, but I, I, I think that with a good really council relationship, that can be addressed. Okay, so Commissioners, at this time, is there a motion from the floor based on, to, a motion from the floor?
Motion to approve, I'm sorry, to recommend approval.
There we go. That's what I was looking for. I got lost.
Yeah, motion to recommend approval to City Council.
All right.
Understanding there'll be more discussions.
Correct. Motion made by Vice Chair O'Neill, second looks like from Commissioner Dick. Then I'm going to do roll call. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Burton Falk?
Aye.
Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Gammy?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Neill?
Aye.
Thank you. And Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
All right, fantastic. Motion passes. Have a great rest of your day. Thank you so much. And thank you so much for waiting so long. Yes, she is.
I am. Thank you for hanging in.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to the final agenda item here today, which is, hold one moment. All right. Thank you so much. Have a, you're very welcome. Moving on to the final agenda item for today, which is Agenda Item D, and that is the Director's Report. Mr. Dash, take it away.
All right. I will try to give you a lot of information in as brief of a time period as I can, although I know I can be a little bit long-winded sometimes. Just an update on the comprehensive plan and, you know, kind of where we are. We did, you know, hold, you know, our public workshop in July, had roughly 175 attendees. You know, we will have another public workshop on August 19th. I think I had made that mention before at the Local Five in the South Side. So we do, you know, want to encourage members to go, you know, you know, there as well. You know, moving towards, we will be following up with a post-agenda with City Council in September after we've done, kind of completed the Summer of Engagement. We do also have our Steering Committee, our Government Working Group, our Community Working Group, our Youth Working Groups, all meeting and in going at it as we work to, you know, to our goal of engaging 30,000 Pittsburghers, which we're doing, you know, especially over the Summer of Engagement through public events, through digital engagement, and through our working groups. You know, we are right in Phase 3, so right in the middle of our Summer of Engagement events, which I'll kind of, you know, talk about. Another item, you know, I, I've also already mentioned to the Commission, the State of Just Pittsburgh reports and the topicary, you know, reports that we have that are presently on the PGH 20 or 50 website. I am going to come back to, you know, in those working groups, there is a pillar focus group. I'm going to come back to that and how the Commission interacts with that focus group specifically. Just as, as of today, most of our Summer of Engagement events are in July and August, and so we are not, those numbers are not reflected here yet. Some of those obviously have not happened, but we are at over 5,000 engaged Pittsburghers through the comprehensive plan process to date. You know, with over 41,000 that have been exposed, exposed being somebody who's, you know, seen our social media, gotten an email. Those 5,000 are people that have attended events. They're people that have been in conversations. There are people that have provided input to a specific, you know, directly through our online portal. You know, so we've been able to do that in kind of a number of ways. You know, are kind of noting that, you know, we're, most of the summer engagement hasn't happened yet. You know, really excited about those numbers, excited about what that means moving forward over the next year to 18 months, which we will be continuing to engage Pittsburghers. You know, we have a number of events that are coming along through the remainder of the Summer of Engagement. I think we still have, you know, somewhere in the 50s in the number of events that are block parties or regular events that communities are holding across the city where the comprehensive plan staff will be representing and taking engagement. You know, again, you know, there are opportunities for Commissioners and others, you know, for both online engagement and in-person engagement and to see a lot of the work that's already happened. So I will jump to pillar work, focus groups and, you know, the, the call to the Commission. There are, you know, five pillar focus groups that we are, you know, which is really getting, you know, stakeholders that are working in those spaces to be able to not only help us with the public engagement that we've received to date and some of the tough choices exercises that we've done both in July and will be doing in August. But, you know, but, you know, really being able to, to use these groups to then formulate the scenarios that we'll be developing for the way that the city grows in the future. Those around, you know, really these five categories, engaged and empowered Pittsburghers, thriving community and well-being, attainable neighborhoods of choice, meaningful economic opportunity and mobility, and resilient infrastructure. And so we do see those groups really forming probably in mid to late August timeframe. We do see them happy, you know, kind of existing through the next two phases of the project, the scenario planning phase and then the plan development phase. So, you know, really looking for members on those pillar focus groups, which will be roughly 30 to 40 people in each of those pillar focus groups, to be participating and helping to build the plan now that we've, you know, we're midway through, you know, our beginning engagement process. And so we, we are making a call, you know, to the Commissioners to do that. And, you know, and so I think in conversation with Commission leadership, you know, we will be sending something out to you all relatively shortly. We have done some identification of where each of the Commissioners, you know, from planning and Commission leadership's perspective, you know, would fit best. I think we want to be able to send that to you all as a follow-up. And if that's something that you feel like, you know, like your perspectives might fit differently, you know, we want to be able to have that conversation as we, as we work to make sure that we have Commission represented, representation in each of these pillar focus groups. So, and, you know, and just as to what that means, again, you know, like we see that happening through the rest of the year. You know, that those pillar working groups would be really kind of, you know, as we move out of Phase 3 and into Phase 4 of the comprehensive plan process, you know, that we are really, again, kind of distilling all of those tough choices that are happening through the Summer of Engagement and that people are providing us input on today and now. And, you know, turning that into scenarios that we'll be developing, which will be having further public engagement on the fall around to create a preferred scenario. And so, you know, what that means is that we'll be doing that work by the end of the year to really then be able to transition as we transition, have a mayoral transition, to have them be able to, you know, to, to provide input and influence scenarios and the final scenario, you know, which would lead to the development of the plan itself. So a lot of work really to go on over the second half of the year. We see these pillar area focus groups as a really big part of developing that and really want to make sure that we have the Commission's representation on those working groups. And that is it.
All right. Fantastic. Any questions or comments? Okay, well.
So look forward to emails from, you know, from us on the, on, on the department side, you know, relative to, you know, kind of where we see Commissioners fitting on those pillar area working groups.
Thank you so much for the report out, Mr. Dash and Commissioners. It looks like this concludes our day. Do I have a motion from the floor to approve?
Adjournment.
Done.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, good job.
Thanks, everybody. See you in September.
Yes, September.
See you, everyone.
Bye-bye. Oh, there you go.
Go your summer.
All right. All right.